Call the June eighteenth City Council meeting to order. Need to read the decorum statement. Decorum statement says, "Welcome to the public meeting of the City Council of the City of Apokka. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. The City Council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the council for action. If you wish to address the council this afternoon, evening, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name, address of record, organization if any, and direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The council and the city staff encourages constructive criticism, however, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violation of these provisions may result in the issuance of a verbal warning, including warning for trespass. If violations persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from the council chambers." With that, Susan?
Okay, Dr. O?
Good evening. I came across accidentally some issues with some past assistance or donations that the commission has made. And one thing I'd like for y'all to make sure in the future, that when people present their EINs, their board members, their charitable statuses, that before you address it up here and vote on it, that you've gone and checked at the state to see their current board list and go to the IRS and see that they actually have a current EIN and it hasn't been revoked, and that you look at FDACs to see that they have been currently reporting their percentage going to their services. I was absolutely astounded that some of these people are having like three percent going to services, seventeen percent going to services, and you've been entertaining them to give them things. And/or their math didn't add up, it wasn't uh... It was more than fuzzy math, it was really bad math, and as a former math teacher, they wouldn't have finished the school year with me. Also, we have people that are claiming to have EINs that don't have EINs, and we have people we have given money to that say that they have, oh, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen board members and they have one board member, but they've presented you with a slate of board members to get some money. This is unethical, immoral, and the city should not be doing business with these people. So, I greatly appreciate you putting someone in place to investigate everyone you give any money to. Thank you. Bye.
Dr. Jim Moore?
My name is Dr. Jim Moore, I live at one eight one one Southern Red Hill Court of Florida. I'm elected Orange Wood and Water Conservation District to supervisor for this particular area. First, thank you for allowing me to do a presentation at the last meeting, and thank you for the outstanding Juneteenth event this past Saturday, I really enjoyed it very much. I handed out, and for the public who doesn't see it, I handed out information about something called life soils. Now, their particular company, I am not at all promoting that company. I don't know if there's one person in that business or a hundred, what I'm promoting is the concept. Pay me now or pay me later. Okay, the more life that's in soil when it goes down, whether it's agricultural or residential, the less water is needed to maintain the life in that soil. So, if you use live type soil in the beginning, it's gonna cost a little bit more money, but in the long run, it's gonna take a lot less water for that and save money. So, I'm not looking at from an individualistic point of view, I'm looking at from a macro, a social point of view, and we all know we desperately need to conserve water. The county has said that, cities around here have said that. So, I'm just advocating to bring to your attention that it's beneficial to have more life in the soil when it goes down. This particular company mixes compost and the soil together to bring, to give more life to the soil as it goes down. So, thank you for your time, God bless you all.
Nikki McGuire, Naomi Kids, good evening Mayor, good evening Council, Vice Mayor, and everyone in the rightful place. I am here before you first to apologize to everyone watching, the last time I came, I was in a rush and I forgot to give detailed main information of how to contact us. I'm so glad Dr. O spoke up, so just to clarify with everyone, we are fully 501(c)(3). We do have our Department of Agriculture Solidity Cetacean License, we do have everything in place, you can look us up, you can Google us, look, check the IRS, we have everything in order. So, again, we're asking the public help. This year, we, everyone's already doing back-to-school drive, we're doing the school shopping for back-to-clothing, each family member will go to Ross and pick up up to a hundred dollars worth of back-to-school clothing. So, we are looking for the public help to contribute towards that, you can give us in the form of Ross gift cards if you wanna make a donation. We do ask please for paper trail, try to avoid giving us cash in hand, but you can go to naomikids.com website and you can donate. We have partnered with Zeffy, an organization where they do not take any fees out of your donation, so a hundred percent of the donation goes directly to that program, and it does not, none of it goes to any administrative costs. If you do wanna drop off a gift card, you can drop it off, we are at seven four three South Central Avenue in Apokka. We are there Monday through Friday, with the exception tomorrow is a holiday for Juneteenth. So, we're there Monday through Friday from seven AM to six PM, and the goal is to give it out to, to be able to, what, twenty-five kids? And the day for the shopping is gonna be July twenty-sixth. We have notified the parents that if we do not meet goal, those in need will go in a drawing and we will pick from the drawing. So, if anyone have any question, you can also call us at four zero seven eight eight three five five eight five, and we wanna thank everyone who has supported us in the past, it's much appreciated. And if anyone, we do have an open door policy, if you wanna stop by to see what we're doing with the kids in our community, you're always welcome to do so. And Vice Mayor, we thank you so far, the kids love when you come to visit, even though I have one in the audience who thinks you're the Vice President. Thank you, have a good evening, everyone.
What was that, what was the donation website?
NaomiKids.com.
Did that link then to that other website that you were saying?
Yeah, so once you go to NaomiKids.com and you click on the donate page, it's gonna give you different options. So, you can Zelle to us and it goes directly, or it will, if you click to pay online, it's gonna go through Zeffy, that's Z-E-F-F-Y. I know I have an accent, so let me spell it out. And Zeffy, so if any other nonprofit organizations listening, that's a good site you may wanna partner in, because like Stripe and every place else, they take fees from your donation, so that's a good way to get a hundred percent directly to your organization.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Michael Duran?
Mike Duran, Claremont, went to Twenty-Six Fifty Foundation, and I just wanna start real quick, Dr. O, we do have our EIN. So, the Twenty-Six Fifty Foundation is proud to announce our second annual Fifteen Days of Hope in memory of fallen firefighter Austin Duran. As we enter the summer this year, this marks three years since Austin's death. Between June thirtieth and July fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two, the City of Apokka has community surrounded the Duran family and the Apokka Fire Department with so much support in so many different ways. From the churches that ensured that every station had meals provided, little ones doing lemonade stands, local businesses hosting fundraisers, the Apokka community truly showed how united we can be. The Fifteen Days of Hope encompasses a series of community events and service projects aimed at fostering unity and expressing gratitude. These events not only commemorate the sacrifices of our first responders and veterans, but also strengthens community bonds through shared experiences and acts of service. I would like to thank all of the commissioners for donating a meal to our fire department. We have successfully planned to feed all six stations on all three shifts. I would also like to thank Chick-fil-A, Loomis, One Florida Bank, the Douglas Family, Laura Hurst, Hurricanes, Christine Moore, also for donating meals to make, feed our firefighters a success. Lastly, I would like to thank Pity Fitness for hosting a supply drive for our stations, First Watch for donating tumblers, City Beverages for donating raffle tickets for the Oak Community Event, Mary Jo and Shirley, Sh- yeah, Shelly Environmental for their generous donation. And lastly, thank you to the Oak Community, Reimage Communities, and Chipotle for hosting events during the Fifteen Days of Hope. Remember that your participation could be as big or as little as you would like it to be, anyone can participate, and there are some several ways that if you want to, you can get involved. You can join us at one of our events, you can donate supplies to Pity Fitness to pack the firehouses, you can support a scholarship for a future firefighter by donating, and spread the word, or you can even start your own initiative. I've handed out the mayor and the commissioners flyers, as well as, we're gonna leave some here, I guess maybe on the press table, for anybody that is interested in finding out what we're doing and attend some events. All the information is also on our website at the twenty-six fifty foundation dot org under the Events tab. Thank you for helping us carry our mission forward in remembering the legacy of Austin Duran and spending these fifteen days of past, paying it forward. Thank you.
Liz Edwards?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Liz Edwards and I am here tonight to represent the Oak as Andrew Reyes owner is at home on paternity leave with the newest member of his family, a little girl who was born last week. So, congratulations to the Reyes family and congratulations to Apokka for your new citizen. Lucky girl. As part of the Fifteen Days of Hope Mr. Duran just spoke of, and in support of our first responders, I am here to present the Third Annual Duran Twenty-Six Fifty Workout from the Oak. We are hosting the event on July eighth at six PM and July twelfth at seven AM at the Northwest Recreation Complex. Registration is free. That's right, free! There is a raffle drawing on both days with some amazing prizes from our local partners. One hundred percent of the proceeds from the raffle sales will go to the Twenty-Six Fifty Foundation. Now, if working out isn't your thing, that's okay. We are also looking for volunteers. Like any event, volunteers are the backbone of the event's success. Now, if working out isn't your thing and volunteering isn't your thing, that's okay. Spectators are also welcome and encouraged. So, where can you find out the particulars of this incredible event? All details, registration for the workout, and the sign-up to volunteer can all be found at theOakCommunity.com. Once again, that is theOakCommunity.com. Circling back to the why and the reason behind the Oaks workout, I cannot emphasize enough how honored and blessed I am standing here tonight speaking about the Oaks event. Andrew, through his company toggles greatly his passion with the mission of the Twenty-Six Fifty Foundation by raising both awareness and funds for training, education, and mentorship opportunities for first responders. So, come and join us. I would love to see all of you there, members of the City Council, and anyone who would like to work along, outside, work out alongside me, and many of the Oaks participants. Grab your snacks, your chairs, your waters, and your spirit. Let's just remember Austin. Once again, the events are July eighth at six PM and July twelfth at seven AM. Once again, the details can be found on theOakCommunity.com, and I also have flyers I'll be leaving behind. Thank you so much, it's an honor.
Ace Woodham?
Ace Woodham of Apokka. I had a lot to say, but I refuse to talk at this moment. I see the dictator's got his way of letting the public talk before the pledge allegiance and the prayer. That's very disrespectful to the community, unless it shows your intelligence in what an asshole you are. I'll come back later.
Leroy Bell?
Leroy Bell, Mark Helen. You guys remember a few months back, we had the cult leader out of Tallahassee here, Doug Bangston. He got up and bragged about how good the schools were doing, how he was funding them, and how he was gonna co-fund or sponsor a bill. Then he really did, and went back, that made sure that each student got nine thousand dollars apiece. Now, in a few minutes, we're gonna, we're gonna see a play. And it gonna play out for the whole community. The same thing I've been saying about this administration for, every time I get up here and speak. This administration bent over backwards to fund his supporters, his friends, even like the banker where he put his money, where he put the city money, causing us to lose money, where he falsely bought COVID tests, where people come up and ask to help the homeless, he refuses. But you'll see, as Dr. O say, all you have to do is look at somebody's organization and look at their administration fee. This is a way for him to get money to his buddies. You watch the ones that come up and stand at these, this podium. Play it back and see how many times they came up to say anything constructive for the citizen of Apokka other than handing their hand out with this. Like, I'm glad that, I hope you seen last, what, that was Saturday, No King Parade? That should be very sad news for some of you guys because it's gonna be an election. And I know for sure, three of the seats is up, and it gonna be hard to refill. But assume that this presentation come up, I know it's already been passed. All he gonna do is come up and go through the motion, and you gonna give Rod Love exactly what he want.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and other commissioners. First, I just wanna thank you for the continued support for the unhoused and needy in Apokka, as always. Thank you for your concerns and support, it's been unwavering. Now that the temperatures have been so rising and so hot, there are so many needs that come with the heat. You know, we need your support this Sunday, we're going to be feeding them at Just Like Mamas. We're gonna bring them outside of the heat and bring them into an air-conditioned place and feed them, clothe them, give them hygiene products. I know that salt comes into the city three days a week to provide them showers. Some of them just take the shower just to cool off in the middle of the day, which is a wonderful thing. So, if you can, make yourself available this Sunday at five o'clock. We will be at Just Like Mamas to bring them out of the heat and bring them into the cool area to provide needs that they need. Thank you very much.
Auburn McKemay three six oh three Golden Gem Road. The retention ponds at Golden Gem Road occupy an area of approximately thirty acres. The facility at Golden Gem Road is actually over a hundred acres in size. Now, it's not often that Mayor and I agree on anything, but the mayor recently said something that he would like to see the city of Apokka with a thousand million gallons of water in reserves. And I think that's something that's realistic, it can be done, and it can actually be beneficial and be a cost-saving to the city. How so? Well, the challenges that you face at Golden Gem Road just now are that we have problems with the integrity of the ponds. One of the solutions would be to replace the liners, they're currently there. If we did that, it would cost us probably about four million dollars. The alternative is to use a combination of clay arching with clay to raise the level of the pond. We could raise the level by six feet, that's about twenty-five percent decrease in the capacity of the facility. But however, here's the thing, two hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards of dirt to raise that bottom of the ponds would cost you about four million dollars, it would take a year to ship in the dirt. We don't need to do that. We have sixty acres of dirt sitting there, and as the mayor's pointed out, if we were to double the capacity of Golden Gem Road, we could use the clay that's already in there to reinforce the ponds that are already there while increasing the pond's size to double what we currently have, and we would still only use- So, in actual fact, increasing the capacity of Golden Gem Road would allow us to do two things. We would probably manage to get grants to remove the clay that's currently there, and it wouldn't cost us money to bring in clay. So, the expenditure that we, we might have to pay if we were bringing in things is gonna be offset by the fact that we're actually gonna grant to, to do the work that we need to do. There's a numerous amount of things with Golden Gem Road that we, we can do. And as I say, one of the things I think the infrastructure in this city requires is funding. We could do that with bonds, and as Mayor Nelson has suggested, if we were selling water to municipalities that surround us, we could pay for those bonds. So, by doubling the size of Golden Gem Road and using bonds, it wouldn't cost us anything. There's another thing that I'm gonna run out of time just now, that we could do that would be really smart, and that would be to relook at Lust Road, to try and recommission some of Lust Road so that we could use the capacity from there to remove water that's flooding the city areas just now, recycle that and put it out into the areas.
Okay, all right, thanks, everybody. Oh, let's see here, we, Mr. Smith, give us the prayer, pledge, and invocation, please.
Our Father God, we come once again for your presence, thankful for the minute blessings bestowed upon us, allowing us to be servants of this city. We ask now for your blessing upon this gathering, bless all those who are covered in this room today. In thy Son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Back to the day, the War of eighteen twelve, which started on June eighteenth eighteen twelve and lasted until February seventeenth eighteen fifteen, was conflict fought between the United States and Great Britain over British violations of U.S. American rights. It ended with exchange of ratification to the Treaty of Jem, fact of the day.
All right. Any changes to the minutes, if not, look for motion to approve minutes from June fourth?
Well, Mayor, before we take a deep dive into that, again, I mean, it was brought up during public calm that invocation and pledge of allegiance wasn't done right after call to order of the meeting, and, and it's appropriate, it happens at dinners, it happens at our parishes that we go to, it's appropriate, it's, in Robert Trolls of Order, it says that, and I'll read a excerpt from it. Opening ceremonies immediately after the meeting is called to order may include the invocation, which, if offered, should always be placed first. So, in Robert Trolls of Order, which both locally, statewide, and federally is- in Robert's rules of order, which both locally, statewide and federally is followed, we should be doing invocation to be blessing and offering peace to everybody, including those that are speaking in public comments. So why are we just unilaterally doing it after public comment?
Thank you, Commissioner Ness.
No, that's not appropriate. That's not keeping decorum. Why are we keeping invocation after public comment?
I asked for is a motion.
And not blessing. So you don't wanna bless everybody similar to what?
We did.
No, people already left.
Looking for motion to approve the.
So you just won't answer that question? And also the minutes that and.
I, I've got a motion. I'm looking for a second.
No, so you just don't wanna bless everybody that's in, in the room or that has already left. And that's inappropriate. It doesn't follow decorum rules. It's not civility. And again, any pastor you talk to would agree with you at the same time or agree with that it needs to be put first, especially the, the same way that Robert's rules of order state. So we need to be doing that.
In a second, all those in favor.
Mayor, you're not.
Opposed, motion carries.
You read decorum, rules of decorum.
It was Commissioner Smith. You, are you?
No, no, I said.
Mayor, excuse me.
We got a motion, a second.
So you're just gonna ignore that?
Were you a yes or no? You were yes or no?
I, you want me to answer your question, but you wanna answer mine?
No, I'm just.
So you won't answer mine? These are simple questions that, again, it's proper and in order for our public to understand what your goals are. So you just, you won't answer any, any of these questions that have to do with decorum that you read a statement in, in front of? Not, not at all. Again, it's in Robert's rules of order and we need to come up with a policy that has to do with implementing Robert's rules of order because it would create efficiencies in our meeting and it would be proper for all of our public that are in attendance and watching.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
So you won't make any changes to invocation? You have no, no, you don't wanna do anything with invocation unless everybody.
Recognize you, so.
Well, we, we don't have any rules of order, obviously. That, I mean, you haven't, let's make a policy of Robert's rule of order to implement that so we're doing meetings properly. You don't wanna do any proper meetings then. You won't agree to that in any capacity. No?
Are you done?
No, you, you won't agree to any proper form of meeting?
We're, we're running a proper meeting.
You, well, you're not. You're, you're just absolutely not at this point.
Thank you.
And also the, the minutes are not properly reflective of the things that are going on. We need a policy in place for the minutes that are actually taking place. What, Mrs. Bone, weren't we supposed to at one point have a policy for how we're supposed to be doing the minutes? Didn't we discuss that previously? I'm not gonna say it was last meeting, but meetings ago, many meetings ago.
We're following.
We're following what, you know, we've always done. I mean, we have.
And I'm not saying that. I'm saying, but there's no specific policy that we can point to that says, 'cause some residents say that, hey, the, the policies and procedures that, well, there are none, so why are certain uh minutes being recorded one way versus the other? And so I, I would, would wanna be able to point back to a policy and say, we're following that to the T. Weren't we, didn't we discuss that at some point or did we not?
No, I, I believe that I recall you saying that you wanted them to be more appropriate. And minutes don't need to be more.
No, and, and so again, if we can create a policy that, again, spells that out and that we can all agree to, to make sure, again, that the public understands it and then that we can stay consistent with it. I think is that's the key again. And similar to, again, invocation and pledge not being in the proper order, I think having policies and procedures in place that we can explain to the public and have uh an understanding of, of how things are properly supposed to be done. I think that's just gonna be key to help uh communication moving forward.
Is there anything missing from the minute that you saw?
Well, they, it's already been approved, so it's irrelevant. I guess this one, it's not irrelevant, but um there, there are comments and, and changes that need to be made on that. But again, the council's already approved them, so um again, if we can come back with a policy that will, of how uh we're doing the minutes so that we can all approve it, again, the public can understand it, speak on how that policy is supposed to be implemented, then we can move forward properly on those. So again, I, I, I just, if we can get a policy on that from the city clerk and then Mayor, I just, I, I, the invocation needs to be properly put right after the call to order.
Okay, Bradley?
Mayor, we have three ordinances later in the meeting. Excuse me, they're gonna come back. Um, developers requesting a continuance. That's ordinance, our number three ordinance, number thirty ninety-eight, uh asking for a continuance to July sixteenth. Number four ordinance, number thirty ninety-nine, again, asking for a continuance to July sixteenth. And then item number six ordinance, number thirty-one twelve, asking for a continuance to the July second meeting. So those will come up.
Three and four was July sixteenth?
And what's?
Three and four was July sixteenth and number six was July second.
Okay, alright. Thank you. So anybody that's here for those, if, I mean, obviously you can stay here. If you wanted to bring a, a comment, if you can't come for that meeting that will be presenting it, um feel free, but we'll, we'll continue those three items. Okay, Jackie, come on up. Give us the Apopka Youth Council end of year presentation.
Jacqueline Keen, Human Resources Department. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight I will be assisting the Apopka Youth Council with presenting the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five um end of the year presentation. Even though Stephen Cribb was not able to join us this evening, he has requested me to take this opportunity to relay his uh to relay his gratitude to Mayor Nelson and the city commissioners for their support for the Apopka Youth Council. This year's Apopka Youth Council was represented by committed and ambitious youth on behalf of the city of Apopka. They have shown tremendous character and goodwill during this endeavor. One particular project the youth, youth council took a special interest in was helping to improve the literacy rates among Apopka's youngest students. They worked hard and displayed true dedication on this mission. We hope you enjoy hearing about the projects and events the Apopka Youth Council contributed to just as much as they enjoyed the experiences they were able to partake in. August is going to go over the roster of the Apopka Youth Council for this year.
Hi, Council. Um, my name is August Rice and here is a list of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Apopka Youth Council members. Um, first is Andres Mayer, Arissa Moniz, August Rice, Ava Nisa, Brock Shapiro, Hunter Yarborough, Isabella Fernandez, Janelle Francis, Kendall Walker, Olivia Hodge, Risha Shaw and Sophia Powell. Thank you.
Andres. Uh, hello, my name is Andres Mayer and uh for Eco Bike Ride on November second of last year, uh we started early waking up around five thirty AM and we met up at City Hall around six AM. Uh, when we got out there to the ride, we passed out water and snacks to the cyclists to support them. Um, in total, there were sixteen riders and alongside me, I had Bella and August to help keep everything organized and make sure the riders were taken care of.
Hello, my name is Rita Shaw. Another event we partook in was the Apopka Recycles Day event, which took place on November sixteenth of last year. Members Ava and Brock met at City Hall at eight AM and worked the event until noon at Edwards Field. They helped with setting up the tent and passing out important information to those present. Five thousand six hundred forty-one pounds of electronics are recycled, which is a thirty-three percent increase from last year. A thousand pounds of this were just TVs. Additionally, one thousand one hundred ninety-seven pounds of papership were recycled, which is a two hundred percent increase from last year. Additionally, a hundred cars were also recycled. The next Recycles Day event will take place on Saturday, November fifteenth.
Hello, my name's Janelle Francis and another event we accomplished this year was the Adopter Road cleanup. We executed two cleanups, one which was from four thirty to seven thirty on the seventeenth of April and the other which was from nine AM to eleven AM on the first of February. During these cleanups, our members cleaned approximately two miles of Sixth Street, scaling from East Station Street to four forty-one. And we filled about six large garbage cans with trash we found. During our cleanup, there are many sights to see, including a beautiful peacock, which we tried to recoup to help us clean.
Hi, my name is Arissa Moniz and our youth council worked on the Legends of Apopka version three books over the course of six meetings and we were assisted by Ms. Boykin. We raised thirteen hundred and sixty-six dollars, which went toward the Apopka Museum Expansion Fund.
Hello, Council. My name is Isabella. And on February twenty-fifth, the Apopka Youth Council hosted the Legends of Apopka event. Where we honored individuals who have made a lasting impact on the community. Members of the council took turns sharing stories about each legend being recognized. The event was a great success with over four hundred people in attendance.
Hello again. Um, the Apopka Youth Council recently is assisted with an event called Burger Books and Badges on June third from two to four PM at the downtown of Apopka McDonald's. I worked alongside fellow Apopka Youth Council member Ava to support the event. We partnered with Reimagined to set up and guide children in creating and decorating bookmarks while encouraging the importance of reading.
Good evening, y'all. I'm Hunter Yarborough. Um, we, as a youth council, did a drive for those officials and they needed a, they had a huge need for dish, dish soap, disinfectant spray. That's what we did this year. Thank you.
And now the class of twenty twenty-five graduates will come up to share their accomplishments and future goals.
Hello again, Council. My name is Isabella and I plan to attend Southern Adventist University uh and major in business management and marketing. Some of the awards I've received includes highest honors for maintaining a four-point-O GPA, the exemplary academic performance scholarship, principal's list for all four years of high school. I've also been a member of National Honor Society for three years, serving as pastor last year and historian this year. For NHS, I received first place in community service and third place in leadership last year. This year, I've received second place in community service and first place in leadership. I also founded the Creative Writing Club at Forsyth Academy as well as head, as well as served as head photographer for the school newspaper and was head anchor and director of our school's news channel. My favorite part of being on the Apopka Youth Council was helping plan events that positively impacted our community. Thank you.
Hello again. My name's Janelle Francis and I recently graduated from Apopka High School. After high school, I plan to pursue my passion as a radiologist. I have a list of some schools that I'm thinking about going to, but I'm currently doing more research to see which one fits my needs best. This year, I accumulated multiple awards, leadership positions and recognitions like graduating Summa cum laude with a five-point-O GPA and earning the Bright Futures Florida Academic Scholarship, which is a hundred percent scholarship to any school in Florida. This year, I was the senior class council vice president, but I was president junior year and sophomore year. I was the Beta Club vice president this year, the Mu, and the Muafa Theta vice president this year, which is the Math Honor Society at my school. I was a part of various other honor societies like National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society and Spanish National Honor Society. This year, I was also selected as the Orlando Sentinel Flag Football Player of the Year, part of the All Metro Flag Football Team and All Metro Academic Player of the Year. What I enjoyed most about youth council was being a part of different efforts to serve our community and getting to learn more about Apopka and its history. When I first moved to Apopka four years ago, I didn't think much of it. I mean, it literally stands for big potato. However, because of AYC, I have grown to love this place and I'm surely gonna miss it when I go to college.
Hello, um and good evening, everyone. My name is Olivia Hodge. I'm eighteen years old and a freshly new high school alum of Apopka High School. My higher education plans are to study English and Law and Society with a minor in Creative Writing at the University of Pennsylvania. Go Quakers! Being one of the a hundred and eleven students that were gifted a full ride scholarship provided by the program Quest Bridge. Um, I do have a little bit more awards and recognition than I have listed there, so don't worry, I'm gonna catch you guys up. Uh, during my long taxing, tolling four years in high school, I achieved accomplishments I've been proud of. Gaining national reckon, recon, ooh, recognition from College Board, claiming the African-American recognition award, becoming speech captain on our school's speech and debate team after being a loyal member ever since freshman year and earning the title of informative speaking state champion, being vice president of National English Honor Society for the last two years and an editor of the literary magazine within the club, being on the girls varsity bowling team and being both district champions and runner-ups as well as being a part of the Battle of the Books competition team for three years, winning first, second and third respectively. And last but certainly not least, Apopka Youth Council. Apopka Youth Council has not only allowed me to interact with my community in so many ways, but actually make a change in it. I recall our work on the Apopka Legends Black History Book where I personally enjoyed celebrating the history of black people that have made Apopka the vibrant and personal community it is. Alright, I'll cut this rambling short, but I'll end with this. Thank you, Apopka Youth Council, for the opportunities and skills I will carry for a lifetime. Have a blessed evening, everyone.
Hello again. My name is Arissa Moniz and I'll be studying at the University of Miami and majoring in nursing on a pre-med track with my main goal of becoming an anesthesiologist. I was a recipient of a full ride scholarship at my university, Bright Futures a hundred percent scholarship, top ten of my class, National Honor Society and a capstone diploma recipient. Lastly, my favorite part of U Council was getting to learn more about my city and its history.
Hello again. My name is Rita Shaw and I will be attending the University of Florida with a major in psychology on the pre-med track with the ultimate goal of becoming a psychiatrist. I graduated from Apopka High School this year as Summa cum laude. I was also a rec, a recipient of the Bright Futures Medallion Scholarship, which will be covering seventy-five percent of my tuition. Some of my other recognitions include being recognized as an Orange County Public School Super Scholar, being on class council for three years, serving as a vice president of Beta Club, National Honor Society member, founder and president of Psychology Club, creative coordinator of Asian students in Apopka and a capstone diploma recipient. Lastly, I was also the designer of the Apopka Youth Council stools that our seniors got to wear at graduation. Some things that I am thankful to AYC for is the new people that I got to meet and make new connections with. I also got to learn more about Apopka as a city. I am grateful for the opportunities I was given as a youth council member to s- serve my community.
Hello once more. Uh, how y'all doing? Oh, I'm a graduate, a high school graduate of Dr. Phillips High School and I will be uh attending the University of Miami. Go Kings! Um, to get, as we see, my degree in sports journalism, uh my awards, oh, they're right here. I'm tripping. Oh, I got a full ride to Miami. Yes. Um, I also have gotten the Bright Futures Scholarship on National Honor Society. I am the co-host of the broadcasting for the Dr. Phillips basketball teams, actually all sports, all the home games I do. And I'm the co-founder of the Panther Podcast, our school's podcast. And I'm also the media specialist for the Dr. Phillips Football Team. Um, my favorite part of AYC was watching everybody uh grow as a family and seeing them all grow out of their shells, especially at the um, the, the Legends of Apopka event, I think that's what it was called. Um, gotten to see all them do their public speaking and do so well. Uh, that was my favorite part. Thank y'all so much. Y'all have a blessed evening. Um, gotten to see all them do their public speaking and do so well, uh, that was my favorite part. Thank y'all so much, y'all have a blessed evening.
Okay, so that concludes our presentation for the Apopka Youth Council for their events of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Applications are open for the twenty-five, twenty-six Apopka Youth Council. You can go to apply at apopka.gov slash A Y C. The deadline for these applications are August twenty-second of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you Jackie. Need to get that, that kid on your radio show.
Alright, next up, we've got a, um, closing the reading gap with strategic partnership for student success. It's, um, presented by Rod Love and it'll give you a little background on the Florida Economic Consortium. It's a five O one C three or nonprofit organization dedicated to empowering underserved individuals, families, and youth in the central Florida area. F E C offers workshops, educational tutoring, responsible fatherhood support services. Financial literacy programs and violence prevention initiatives driven by data to measure effectiveness. The organization is led by its president Rod Love, a seasoned leader with a distinguished background in both government and private sector leadership. Bringing decades of experience in community and development, policy implementation, and organizational growth. And with that, Rod Love, come on forward, please sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. As mentioned, my name is Rod Love, I'm the president of the Florida Economic Consortium. Thank you for allowing me this evening to present to you an initiative that I think is gonna be important to all of us in this room this evening. Tonight, I'm here to respectfully quest the city's partnership and support as we continue to work. To ensure that every second and third grader are reading at reading levels. I'm gonna present to you this evening.
Raise the, yeah, there you go, yeah.
I'm gonna present to you this evening some factual data, data from the Department of Education. As we actively pursue additional funding and we're not asking the city of Apopka for a dime. But as we continue to look for funding for areas that we've been in. F E C's been in the space of providing tutoring and math coaching for the la- for since twenty twenty and we provided services to over three hundred kids. Our focus is not looking at the volume of kids that we serve, our focus is looking at outcomes. While there's a strong correlation that exists, uh, some claim that third grade reading levels perpetuate. Prisons, the number of prisons that are being built. Unfortunately, that's a myth. However, there's a strong and well-documented connection between low literacy levels, particularly in childhood. That increase the risk of incarceration. What I'd like to do, and I'll run through this presentation, uh, very briefly. But I wanna present to this commission why I wanna partnership with the city of Apopka. I was inspired by Matthew's Hope that presented and came to the table to request a partnership. One of the things that we recognize is collaboration is the best competition now. Collaboration is moving the needle forward. So with that being said, why third grade reading matters? Third grade is a pivotal point from learning to read to reading to learn. Students are not reading at grade level by the third grade, they're four times more likely to drop out of high school. Reading proficiency is a critical predictor of long-term academic success and listening to the young people that were here earlier today. The proof is in the pudding. Early literacy affects comprehension, confidence, and future earnings. Now, when I mentioned to you that I was gonna present facts to you today, the information I'm presenting to you today is from the Department of Education. F E C wants to look at how can we partner with local schools and focus on improving the third grade literacy rates? Well, if you look at the charts that I'm gonna present to you today, you'll look at the fact that. The state of Florida, third graders are reading at a forty percent literacy rate. Which means sixty percent of third graders in the state of Florida are not reading at level or above level. When you look at the district reading level rates for third graders, it's at fifty-five percent, five percent below. And, and what I'm looking at here, I just really wanna bring this thing home. When you look at Apopka Elementary School, they're at thirty-five percent, which means there's, there's a below reading rate of sixty-five percent. Lakeville Elementary School, we're looking at. Boy, I tell you, my daughters grew up in this community, my daughters went to school in this community, and that's why this is important to me. But you look at Lakeville Elementary School and look at a seventy percent reading below level. Level Elementary School, seventy percent reading below level. Phillips Weekly Elementary School, sixty-eight percent reading below level. And last but not least, Zellwood Elementary School, sixty-three percent of the students are reading at below level. You know, the consequences of low reading proficiency by third grade, increased dropout rates that I mentioned earlier. The gre- a greater likelihood of grade retention and special education placement. Higher rates of juvenile involvement, reduced unemployment and lifetime earnings. One of the things that we do with F E C, we all grew up doing an era that it was important to look at our G P A grade point average. Well, one of the things that we've done is we've brought some of the best minds to the table since twenty twenty. And we formulated something that we focused on and we've tracked, and it's called G B A. We've worked with educators and educators have asked us the question, what is G B A? And G B A is Grades, Behavior, and Attendance. F E C has tracked this since we began providing math and reading coaches since twenty twenty. And as you can see, we're tracking it and you can actually see and chart course with individual kids and families. To make adjustments to help support these young people. With this initiative, one of the things that we do, we use mentors, we've used, uh. High performing high school students that are duly enrolled, we've used honor roll students. But we're also looking at, how do we open this up to look at role models as well? How do we look at father figures, how do we look at senior citizens helping third graders read at reading levels? But one of the things that we're also focused on and one of the initiatives that we've had for the past year is working with fathers, responsible fathers. And I'm gonna play this presentation very quickly for you because this will tell you why it's important for us to make sure that we include fathers.
Half of the Florida Economic Consortium, we're proud to share the powerful mid-year results of the Central Florida Responsible Fatherhood Initiative. Through a contracted partnership with the Experienced Christian Center in Orange County. And No Limits Education and Counseling in Seminole County, this initiative is transforming lives. Sixty-one men, mostly African-American fathers ages nineteen to fifty-five, have stepped forward. Many face real challenges, nearly one-third live in opportunity zones. Twenty-eight percent were recently incarcerated and nearly half have criminal justice histories. But here's the hope, ninety-two percent want to be more involved in their children's lives. Seventy-seven percent are seeking skills training, seventy-three percent want career development, and sixty-five percent are asking for job placement help. Despite the odds, seventy percent of participants are employed, but disparities remain. Seminole County participants face higher unemployment and greater emotional health needs. Across both counties, nearly half requested mental or emotional support. And one in three need conflict resolution assistance, what's clear is this, these fathers are not giving up. They're asking for the tools to succeed, to heal, and to lead. This isn't just a program, it's a movement, a commitment to restore families, empower fathers, and strengthen communities. And with continued support, we're just getting started.
Let me say to you that that young man that was in the video with his family. He went through our Responsible Fatherhood Initiative Program, he received services. Uh, May of last month, this young man went to court. And he successfully prevailed to show that he's a responsible father, to show that he's paying his child support. To show that he wants to be emotionally attached to his child and he actually won joint custody of his child. His children met for the first time a couple of weeks ago and he followed up with us to let us know. It matters, it matters. F E C's vision for the multi-generational fatherhood focus and mentorship model. I talked about senior citizens, I talked about responsible fathers, I talked about the fact that we engage high school students, college students. Everybody has to play a role in this, but here's something that F E C is also doing. We're deploying a stipend mentorship model, uh, to elevate the literacy outcomes and strengthen families. We're looking at the mentor roles, uh, that will include senior citizens, college students, honor roll students, father figures. These mentors will work weekly with students, providing reading support, encouragement, and positive role modeling. This approach not only increases early reading proficiency, but also fulfills the mission of responsible fatherhood, restoring the bond between fathers and their children. The intergenerational mentorship fosters academic growth, emotional stability, and long-term community strength. To this body, I'm here today to ask for a partnership. A partnership that's not asking for a dime, a partnership that's asking for your engagement. Uh, with that, the call to action that I have here today is. Join this initiative, invest, help us as we invest in second and third reading intervention programs, you've seen the data, the data doesn't lie. Partner with community-based organizations like Orange County Public Schools, we're looking at the partnership possibly with the city of Apopka. But we're also looking for business partnerships and faith and community-based organization partnerships. The support, uh, integration of STEM into our literacy is something that we're also looking at as well. But I will close with this, that we're serious about working with local communities, we are looking at moving the needle. And at the end of the day, it's not about saying that we serve so many people, at the end of the day, it's about outcomes. Too many resources are being expended without seeing the outcome, so with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have, thank you.
Any questions for Rod?
Um, sure. So, I mean, you, you, you mentioned all the ele- elementary schools in our district. But what is O C P S doing? Cause that, don't they send resources to these schools as soon as they realize that the reading levels? Are not meeting the standards, aren't those programs already in the school?
We, we have been meeting with Orange County Public Schools and discussing this initiative. Uh, Commissioner, I can't speak to what Orange County is doing, but what I can speak to is what has publicly been noticed. And the fact that Orange County Public Schools just recently experienced. I think it's in the neighborhood of a thirty million dollar cut, so I can't speak to the resources that they have going in other areas, but. I can speak to what F E C is proposing.
So how does, how does your program differ? I mean, how are you gonna get into the schools and get in to, into kind of be in the schools with these? With the students who are reading below level, how are you, how is this program being set up?
Well, one of the things that we have done with, in partnership with Orange County Public Schools is, we are a registered. One of the things that we've done with Orange County Public Schools is, uh, we are a registered vendor. When you asked the question about how do we get into the schools now? You know there's a process, background screening and a, a, a process by getting in. So the first step is to be approved by Orange County Public Schools to actually have access within the school. So that is what we've done to get there, but let me also say this. Orange County Public Schools has initiated an initiative now to focus on third grade readings levels because they've seen the research. And it's important to them to develop a strategy to improve it.
Um, uh, you know, my, I, first of all, I've seen all these little videos in the last week. Kind of trending, I've listened to all of them, they're on social media, including this one, and I think there's two others also that are kind of trending. It's a female and someone else like that.
And, and those videos that you're referencing, it's giving you the data, it's giving you the outcomes, it's actually giving you information based on. A, not only a best practice, but evidence-based practice.
I know, you, you presented a lot of data, but where can we get that data just to review all of this? And one of the things I do wanna, uh, kind of research and kind of confer with is, uh. Our school representative, Melissa Byrd, I'm surprised that she didn't come at least tonight to. Give her side of what O C P S is doing, um, or what they have in place. For the third graders, cause by the second grade, you know that some of the kids, some of the students are not up to par in their reading. So, I mean, I volunteered for years, um, through, um, I remember when the city of Apopka had, and this was before COVID. Called Reading with Heroes, and we were in different schools. And part of that program was to enhance their reading and to help them because a lot of the students. They don't really get books, they do the I-ready, if I'm not mistaken, if they're still doing that. And I could remember going to at Level, which, which one of the schools that I do go, what used to go to. Was to spend forty-five minutes with a lot of the students that were reading below level and help them through I-ready. That's what we used to do, when COVID hit, unfortunately, the schools kind of closed down and then. It took over a year to kind of start different volunteer, uh, organi- and that organization groups. In order to come back into the schools and help support the students. And, um, I'm pretty, I'm not doing it anymore because now I belong to different, um, organizations that do a different. Um, uh, service for the schools, but I'm seeing what you want to do. But I really want to see what O C P S is, um, serving, what they have as a resource.
Okay, Commissioner, you also asked me where can the commission get the information? We work with Orange County Public Schools and they directed us to the Department of Education's website that has all the information on all sixty-seven counties. That's the information that I presented to you this evening.
So all of this comes from O C P S?
Department of Education.
Department of Education.
Yes.
Alright. I probably can answer some of your questions, so I am friends with a lot of principals. And one of the, and my daughter has just left middle school, and one of the challenges have been is resources and time. And what they usually do is everything in or in this, um, public school system is driven by tests. They look, they dad look at the test, see how kids are performing, the kids are performing lower, they pull them in groups. Usually the group settings are seven to ten kids and it's usually for twenty minutes, um, two days a week. So I don't think that's enough impact that you're gonna have if kids are performing below, um, the, uh, grade level. So, um, just to answer your question, from experience, from volunteering, from having close friends that are middle school principals. That's kind of what they do, elementary principals and middle school principals, but that's kind of what the model that they actually have. I know other schools that are performing lower, your, your, more of your inner, inner city, um, schools, um, they do have more intense programs. But, um, from my understanding, some of my other friends, uh, a lot of educator friends, is that they partner with local schools and the local, um. Uh, principals and they have reading clubs, um, at the school. So it's all about local partnership, so that's what I've seen from my experience, um. I haven't seen anything I know at, in the Apopka area, um, that where they have programs that are really, really focused on. Third graders that are not reading at grade level, that's not what I've seen, so.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, Mr. Love, I heard you say you're not asking for anybody, you're asking for partnership, what does that partnership from the city looks like? Utilization of community centers when available. The majority of the mentorship that take place, are taking place one-on-one with those mentors and role models. So facilities aren't critically important, what's important is that engagement. But we're looking just as, again, I referenced, I was inspired by Matthew Hope's presentation. When you're looking at partnerships, when you're looking at collaborations, there are some things F E C does not do that other organizations do that. Our population can benefit from. And when we talk about resources. Orange County Public Schools just experienced multimillion dollar reduction in resources, so F E C is. So FEC is looking to come to the table and partner. You know, our hopes is that we can help more third graders read at reading level. And if I break down those numbers even more, and you can actually again, go to the Department of Education, go to the school district. You'll actually see. When we look at poor communities, in particular, when you break it down and the Department of Education breaks it down, you'll see that across the board. Black males are suffering more than any other population when it comes to literacy rates. And in, in, in following black males or Hispanic. So you can find the information yourself, Commissioner, but that's the reason why FEC is at the table this evening.
Commissioner Mastin? I appreciate the presentation and the time. The presentation you showed is not the exact one that we have in our packet. Are you able to send out the one that, that you showed tonight?
Yes, I can send that.
It was specific to the, the stats on the specific schools. Delwood and Lakeville, I think you had referenced in, in this presentation. I think that's really useful data to use. And, and my wife actually taught at Lakeville Elementary for many, many years. So I'm keenly aware and understand the dynamics we're dealing with here. The, the different diversity that, that, that we're pooling from at each school and, and who and what needs help and what specific areas. So you're already partnered with OCPS?
We are a registered vendor with Orange County Public Schools, yes.
In, in what capacity?
When you're a registered vendor, you actually have access to go into schools and work with young people. We have mentors that we background screen that are working with kids, tutoring kids in math and reading. So the, my organization is background screened with Orange County Public Schools. What our issue is, is continuously looking at resources, looking at how do we continue to fund mentors. We, our mentors today that we started off in 2020 are now registered nurses. We have some teachers that went through our program and process. So it's an evolution, just continuously evolving process. And this is, we're asking for collaboration here.
So, and then in that, you had said there's a stipend mentorship model, so there is some type of, the mentors are getting some type of compensation to be involved?
The, the, the other component of what we do is, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna use the word simply this. We hold our mentors and role models accountable. If we are looking at volunteers and man, I would encourage people to volunteer all day long. But at the end of the day, when we want to get the records of grades, behavior and attendance, and here's an example for you. When we look at young people and you have young people that are getting Ds and their, their behavior is a three. And you look at their absences from school and it's beyond the 12 absences that there, that triggers a truancy engagement by the schools. People don't realize that when you see that D student and you're thinking, okay, let's take that D to an A. We're being realistic. You look at that D and you see that conduct go from a three to a one, you're making progress because now in that learning environment. You have a teacher who can focus on all the students and not the disruption that's taking place in the class and continue to work on that one student. So that is why we pay a stipend to these mentors and role models so that we can hold them accountable for the work that we're expecting from them.
Understood. Okay. And then, so you're wanting exclusively, you're just wanting a partnership with facility use, basically?
Yes.
When would you want that to begin?
Well, one of the things that we're doing is, as you well know, school is out right now and we're looking at the level of partnership with the schools. Looking at our mentors, looking at utilizing those facilities to do parent socials. One of the, one of the things that you will find from various organizations that's working with kids in communities, and particularly in high-risk communities. Is the parent engagement is not what we would like to see it at. And so predominantly, we will be asking to use those facilities to do parent engagement, bringing parents together with their children to have these discussion workshops and conversations.
Okay. You want that like during summertime or once school hits or?
What, once school hits, we would definitely be looking for a youth facility agreement that we can utilize. And again, this is not utilizing the facility on a regular basis for the events that we have, that we can bring the families together.
How often do you think, or what's that expectation, kind of monthly? Do you think you'll be using it? Is it like, or weekly maybe, are you using it multiple times a week?
One of the things, if we look at the model that we look at now, we try to do these events on quarter, on a quarterly basis. But you, you don't know the level of engagement. When I talk about collaborations, you don't know how many referrals that you may make out. For family counseling, mental health services. And we may be engaging the city to utilize those facilities so that the therapists can come into the community.
Okay. So, and, and maybe this is for our city administrator or, or attorney. Would there be a similar agreement to what we've done, like a non-exclusive use agreement? Or what would this look like on, on the more formal side?
Yeah, there could be. Non-exclusive being the key because these are city facilities you want to be able to use when you want to use them.
Okay. So it'd be similar to what we've already had then effectively? Is that, is that the goal here?
Depending on the facility.
Okay. Mr. Love, is that what, is that what you're requesting of something in, in line with, with that, like type of agreement?
Well, facility use agreement is, is, that's as simple as I can put it. Yes. So that we can utilize facilities to pull youth together, pull families together. But facility use agreements, yes.
Okay. So then I guess our city administrator, are we, should we expect that at our next meeting to kind of bring this back if, or what's that look like?
Yeah, it'd be the pleasure of the commission, of course. But we do have facility use agreements. We've had a couple of different varieties. And we've done a couple of different programs similar to this. Actually FEC we've partnered with in the past on another mentorship program. So we do have some of these that we can look at if that's the will of the commission.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
So you, I'm sorry, you mentioned we have another. Organization doing the same thing?
Saving Our Sons.
We have Saving Our Sons?
Not, they're a mentorship program. They don't do the reading side of it necessarily.
Okay. Mr. Love, the only thing I would ask is if you can provide more information on this for us to kind of review. That would give me an opportunity also to, to kind of have a discussion also with Melissa Byrd. Just to kind of get an idea of what it is that OCPS is providing to the schools that you mentioned. You're talking about a mentorship program, but you're not really in the schools. How many mentors do you have in this organization that are active?
We have a number of mentors that provide reading and math coaching to kids across Orange County. I, I can't say how many. We may have 15. I'm not sure how many we have.
And you pay, and, and they each get a stipend?
Yes.
And what is that amount that you pay them?
It, it varies, Commissioner. It varies. But we have, we have, we, we've done this for the last, since 2020.
What schools are you in right now?
We're in public schools across Orange County. I can, I can provide you a list of schools that we provide, that we provide tutoring services to.
Respectfully ask for a lot more information that I can really look at and kind of decipher. And if I have any questions, I can send them to you, right? The questions?
Yes.
Okay. Cause partnering and not having a lot of information. Because my, my concern is we, the students are in school. That's where we want to provide them their resources. This partnership is outside of the school hours. Am I, am I correct in saying that?
We, we've been providing reading and math coaching since 2020, and that doesn't take place while the kids are in school.
So you're doing this in a school setting?
Commissioner, we have been providing reading and math coaching, and this has been outside of the schools. This is, we, we have parent consents that the parents sign that their kids need. And they're consenting that the kids are getting reading and math coaching and education tutoring.
So this is the program that you said that's been going on since 2020?
Correct.
Okay. It's not in the city of Apopka right now?
We provide tutoring service to children in the city of Apopka as well.
You have services right now in the city of Apopka?
Yes.
Where?
Math and, you, you, Commissioner, these are tutors, these are coaches that are providing reading and math tutoring to kids in Orange County Public Schools.
I know. I feel like I'm going around in circles right now. I'm just asking. You have this program in the city of Apopka. Where is it being held right now?
It's being held by the mentors that are providing the tutoring services to the kids. It's not at a school, Commissioner, if that's what you're asking.
Right. I'm asking, is it in a school?
No, no, it is not.
So it's being held in the city of Apopka. Where is it being held right now? Like what facilities are you using?
Commissioner, these mentors are providing the educational services face-to-face. Some of the services are being provided virtually, so it's not in a school setting.
Okay. So it's being done virtually right now?
Virtually and face-to-face, Commissioner.
Okay. So we're, we're going around in circles. And so the only thing I will respectfully ask, if you can send me more information on this so that I can have a better way of judging. Or real, considering that this program would work for us.
Okay.
Is that a fair deal? Because this is just a presentation today. There's no vote on it. But I think the more information that we can get on this program and to have a better understanding would help me to make a decision.
Ms. Van Nistel?
First, I will say thank you, former Commissioner Love, for your presentation. I just want to just really highlight that we have someone that's coming in, want to partner with the city, not asking the city for any resources. But to allow us to donate a space. And for anyone that have an issue with someone that wants to come into the city and assist our kids when they aren't providing any services themselves to our community. Then may God be with you. But in addition to that, I think that we are asking questions that we have never asked any organization about their pay structure, how they're paying their mentors. We have never asked those questions before. And I want to make sure that whatever tone that we are setting, that we are setting the same tone for everyone that comes in. And we ask them their pay structure. I've never heard us asking about their pay structure, how much you're paying someone. And I want to make sure that we are not creating a space that is biased for people when they're coming in trying to provide services to our city. In addition to that, I had the pleasure at the age of, when I graduated undergrad, serving up under leadership of Mr. Rod. When he was department, the secretary, the secretary, department secretary for juvenile justice. And some of his work and some of his leadership has some, have something that I've never actually experienced before. And I just think it's just a shame on some of the members of the council to really, really ask questions. And questions the integrity of someone's program when they are providing services that are needed in our school system. In addition to that, to say that they only need services when they're in school. When teachers are already limited resources, limited time, and already has, have large class sizes. Just shows that as a council, we need to be more educated. A lot of these mentor programs come in as a substitute and also a supplement to what the school system is giving. It takes a village. It doesn't take just a school system. The teachers are already stressed. They're already underpaid. And we definitely need partnerships. We talk about partnerships. Partnerships does not want to cost our city a dime. And what I do know is that Mr. Love, because I have met with him before. I actually have asked him several times over the years about doing things in Apopka. Most recently, I asked him about bringing his program to Apopka and doing more in Apopka. And full transparency, he really didn't want to do it because he was very successful other places because of kind of the attacks that just happened here.
No, this is not an attack.
Well, if, if you're asking someone their pay structure, and we've never asked them their pay structure.
It was just out of curiosity because Commissioner Nesta has said a stipend was paid, which I thought was, was something that I didn't know. But now I will say this, I do remember over 10 years ago, you did come into the city of Apopka and it was addressing. Kind of the crime level that was going on and you had a, a program and a mentorship to deal with the young. Black men, the black youth in the South Apopka. And I do remember that program. I don't know what was the, if it still exists. Doesn't. And I remember that was a partnership that we had with you from, I guess, from the very beginning. So this program, now I, I volunteer at Lakeville. I've been doing Lakeville for almost six, seven years. And I do it through the Kiwanis for Key Club. So I am involved in the elementary schools and I did do the Reading with Heroes with Lovell. And I did participate also with Apopka Elementary School. My concern is that this program, and I saw you said faith-based and you need a space in the city. We only have two spaces, basically. They're pretty much booked. It's very hard to get them, which is the Frank Carlton. And also the Apopka Community Center. Those are really the only two spaces that we have that would be provided. So that would be, the scheduling would have to be with recreation. And the only reason why I asked was because Commissioner Nesta mentioned a stipend. And so the concern was if you want to partner with the city, does that paying the mentor a stipend include part of that partnership? So it's not questioning your integrity at all. I've worked with you before. I know what you do. I was just asking, is your program currently running in the city?
Commissioner?
And that's a fair question. Is it running in the city? You're asking for us to partner with you, but all I want is it in the city right now?
Okay. And Commissioner, and, and to this body, I think it's important for me to say this as well. The same thing that I'm presenting to you tonight, we are presenting to the faith community, to partner with the faith community under the same exact conditions.
Okay. So all I'm asking is if you can just send me more information. And I will contact Melissa Byrd because I want to see, you said there was a $30 million cut. I don't know what that cut consists of. And I want a program that's going to be successful for the third graders. I mean, I worked in the schools and I see the struggles. I see the struggles with the teachers. I see, I see all of that. I just want to make sure that the program that you're offering would be the right fit for us. That's all. That's not questioning your integrity. This, this presentation doesn't give us that, doesn't give me that much information. That's all.
Well, let me jump into real quick here is that the questions that I were asking, I would ask anybody and have either privately or in public. Additionally, I don't need to be educated in any capacity in what teachers go through, especially at any local school, Lakeville Elementary specifically. As again, I know very firsthand what the teachers are going through and, and what capacity they need assistance in. And I think the question behind this too is not anything more than this is a unique program and it's new to us. It's not duplicated anywhere else in our city. And so to make sure that we understand it, I'm going to say myself, understand it. I just wanted to ask those questions. I'm not attacking. I don't think those questions were an attack. It's understanding your model a little bit better. Because should this, and the goal is if we're going to partner, it gets bigger, it gets better. If it does, we need to see how this, how this scales. And, and I think that's important. And the only reason I brought up stipend is because it was in your presentation as well. So this, it wasn't an attack on you in any capacity or in your model. It was in your presentation. I just wanted clarity on that. So, and again, I think it's important to ask questions so that when we go out to the public, I can correctly advocate. On the decisions we make. So I just want to make sure that's clear, that questions shouldn't be a bad thing and shouldn't be seen as an attack.
And I'm just going to say that, that I didn't ask a whole lot of questions because I realize that our education cannot take place inside of this classroom. Teachers are fully occupied trying to teach their curriculum they have to teach, to make sure that the students are able to pass these tests. Let state is mandated, they pass. And so to have an opportunity for them to get some additional help outside of the school setting. I think is very, very instrumental and very important to the success of all our students.
Okay. We'll close this out. I just want to thank you, Rod. Appreciate, I mean, nice presentation. And you know, you, you've been doing this for a long time. You've gotten a lot of state funding, county funding, city funding. So obviously you're doing something right. So I, I think when we look at what your track record, track record's pretty doggone good. So, and I will share this with, with the commission and also the members of the public. Rod Love and I were at, in, in Tallahassee, we were looking, I was looking for appropriations for the city. But we made a, a, a track over to the Florida Chamber of Commerce. The Florida Chamber of Commerce has six pillars. So if you go on the Florida Chamber of Commerce, their website, it's got six pillars. And one of them is third grade reading. Third grade reading is one of their top six pillars. We're talking about from economic development across the board. It's number, one of their top six. So we were trying to get with Rod and, and, and you know, the city to, to see if we could get, you know, start a, a bigger pilot with the Florida Chamber. And all of their heavy-duty, you know, corporate members to come together and see if they couldn't, you know, help us start something that we could scale up to something that would go statewide. And, and we had a good conversation with Mark Wilson, the, the president of the, the Florida Chamber, as well as a couple of his educational folks. So good discussion and you know, haven't gotten a, a green light yet, but we, we are still having those conversations. And hope one day that's something that we can, can partner in a, in a bigger way. So thank you, Rod. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you.
All right. Next up, Fire Department Act. Chief? Sure.
A few.
Okay, okay.
How'd you know Kelly?
All right, we'll get started, good evening, Will Sanchez, Apopka Fire Department, Mayor Commissioners. I'm here to present on a significant accomplishment in our fire department's history. Our ISO rating, which dictates the fire insurance rates in the city of Apopka, has been designated. We are notified in July of last year that ISO grading would take place that year. The assessment occurred in December of twenty twenty four, providing us the opportunity. To put what we believe is one of the greatest fire departments to the test again. ISO collects information on municipal fire protection efforts in communities throughout the United States. In each community, they analyze the relevant data using their fire suppression rating schedule. Fifty percent of the community's overall score was based on the fire department, the structured fire suppression system. The evaluation conducted encompassed a range of critical areas, for example, the assessment of our engines. Their pump capacities, reviewing and testing or the review of our testing records of hoses, pumps, ladders. Additionally, they examined the size of the department, the staffing and the training provided to the members. Key considerations included the response distance to developed areas in our operational methods. The review also addressed the Orange County Automatic Aid Agreement and everything from the height of a structure within the city. To the buildings that are equipped with automatic sprinkler systems. They validated the tools and the equipment that we utilize, every fire suppression call were reviewed and measured against the NFPA criteria. They reviewed our on-duty workforce strength, standard operating procedures concerning structural fires. And a thorough examination of our monthly training hours, training records, our training center requirements and our pre-planning inspections. Based on all that information obtained, they then took it back and scored it. ISO assigns a public protection classification from a one to a ten. Class one generally represents superior property fire protection. A class ten indicates that the area's fire suppression program doesn't meet the minimum criteria. Classifying Apopka's ability to suppress fires is a critical measure. It assists us in evaluating our fire protection services. The program provides an objective, countrywide standard that helps the fire department plan and budget for facilities, equipment and training for fire suppression. Unfortunately, this does not measure our EMS system, only fire, we also provide the EMS services. So Apopka Fire Department's score and grade, unlike our previous grades, there were many factors that significantly impacted the score in this round. Including the city's growth, our first time obtaining a grade with the addition of the Orange County Contract Area, two additional fire stations. Apopka Fire Department received a score of. One hundred point twenty five, giving us a classification of an ISO one. This new score represents our effectiveness and professionalism, this is an impact for the city, this is an impact for the citizens. This makes one of the most significant impacts in our community. Fewer than one percent of fire departments nationwide achieved an ISO class one rating. Since two thousand and four, Apopka Fire Department has sustained its status as an ISO class one agency. And this rating was not solely on our firefighter capabilities and encompassed several additional factors. The assessment included an evaluation of our communication center, focusing on the operational capacity, performance, staffing. And other relevant criteria, ten percent of the overall score was based on how well our communication center receives and dispatches fire alarms. Forty percent of our overall score was based on our water supply system capability. That included flowing and testing our hydrants, the city's fire hydrant sizes, types, installation, maintenance, inspections. And community risk reduction presented additional points, which included fire prevention code regulations, fire prevention staffing, educators. Their qualifications and our outreach and educational programs were also reviewed along with our fire reporting system. Now, if you could bear with me for a minute, I have a lot of people to thank, first and foremost. I want to thank the men and women of the Apopka Fire Department, I am truly blessed to serve along you, alongside of you. Their dedication to the citizens of this community, their customer service, their professionalism, their training, everything in between. They are the reasons why we are a class one fire department. I truly, my hat comes off to these men and women, this is the same crew that worked on Sunday, we have multiple structured fires. I witnessed them from the first fire going out to the next one, to the next one, to the cleanup, to the middle of the night calls. They're running, they're putting in a lot of work and they continued on, some of them even worked the next day, their dedication goes beyond. I also need to thank our communications director, Billy Bryant, trying to hide out over there in the corner. His dispatch team, day and night, they're the ones that answer the calls since someone's worst day. And truly, that ten percent made a big difference in our score and everything that they do for us. Mike Zuber, he was here just a couple of minutes ago, but he left. If you don't know Mike, he's in charge of our GIS system, we came to Mike for just one question. We said, hey, can you help us out with a mapping, little did he think that he was going to be stuck with us for several months. Mike has revamped our entire system, we are tracking not only our responses, we're tracking as far as on the GIS mapping system. Every hydrant, every water line, everything that has to do with the fire department, our mile and a half range, two and a half hour tower. Mike has truly been the foundation behind getting this moving and he's taking pleasure to it, so we're truly thankful for his service.
Is that Mike Rodriguez?
Zuber.
Oh, Z, okay.
And then Rob Hippler, I know he's in the back hiding. Rob, Bob, the entire IT team, they keep us afloat, they keep us going as far as between our communication center. Making sure that we are compliant with our ISO regulations, making sure as far as everything from our reporting structure. And I can't forget about Nate Clark, which is our communications administrator, as far as system administrator. He's the man behind the walkie-talkies, he's the man that keeps us in constant communication, upgrading our systems, making sure that we have the right firmware, the right radios. Everything that we need to operate. I know Glenn Brooks isn't here, our water resource distribution manager and his team, they were truly vital. Forty percent of the total points came from them as far as their design, from this designation. The information that ISO requested, I think a couple of weeks in, they asked them for ten-page packet. Couple of days later, they asked for some more information, the days that they were here, they were asking more from the plant and they were able to provide all that information that was needed. Last, Martin Kelly, our content specialist and our content administrator, these ladies are the ones behind the screen maximizing our educational outreach. Through social media, the website, the newsletter, any PR, any public relations, anything that we're trying to push out. For information, educational, they're the ones behind that, getting that message out to the community. And Mayor, Council and Citizens, we are truly blessed to have your support, we talk about this all the time, it's truly a team effort. We did not accomplish this solely as a fire department, we obtained this as a city. I'm extremely proud and looking forward to the challenge of maintaining it through our continued growth, making us a stronger fire department for the future. And I would like to end with this slide, listing the internal stakeholders who had a part during the data collection period of this process. When ISO arrived, we had to produce everything from our dispatch times to call volume to equipment checklist, everything. And every member listed up there had a part in collecting some of this data, putting it together, making sure that we were able to produce this. We ended up with fourteen three-inch binders ready for the review on day one when they came in. And once again, we are truly thankful for your support, I mean, and just reflecting back on the fires that we had the other day. In less than a year, we're going to have another fire truck here, we're going to have a new tower truck. That tower truck is going to provide that critical need that's needed on the north side of town, the dual towers for these big homes. Some of these fires that we went to, forty-two hundred square feet homes, two-story homes where we needed two aerial apparatuses. And thanks to you and this commission, you guys provided that for us, we're expecting to have that tower truck by the end of December. Expecting to be up here in a couple of weeks, asking you for the personnel for that truck when we do our budget workshop. But overall, this was the biggest community effort from the fireside that we were able to accomplish with multiple departments, multiple members. And it starts with your support that you provide us, so thank you. You guys have any questions, can we do a picture as a group?
Yeah, I just I just want to re quickly say thank you for the update and thank you for all you've been doing since you stepped into the chief's position. And it it's clear that you've made some very tangible changes in the positive and very intangible, that cultural change has been absolutely incredible, it's just you can see it, you can feel it. Such positivity is coming from your department now and it's it's great to see you, yes. Thank you for what you're doing and keep it up.
Thanks, sir.
And I just want to commend you all for the outstanding job you did on Sunday with all those fires taking place all at the same time, your dedication is appreciated.
Absolutely, I think this weekend was uh for all our community to see how much um is when a fire really happens. But I also have to say this, the fire department not only just fights fires, I have seen you out there for the EMS part. Which is really the everyday um just attending to regular residents for a lot of medical issues. And the time that it, you know, when people call for emergencies, you're there. Not only does the ambulance show up, but the fire trucks, everyone shows up to support um each other. And I've seen it, I've also been uh one of the residents that you've come to our home for. And I just appreciate everything that you do and I will just ditto what Commissioner Nesta said and that is. In the last year and a half, what I have seen, how of how our fire department has grown, the morale and the strength. Um is impressive and I'm really happy to be part of that, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
I also echo for the sake of time the sentiments of all three of the commissioners and great job.
Thank you.
And to the team, you guys have done an amazing job, thank you for y'all doing, and uh let's continue to rock and roll, so.
Let's do it.
Twenty-one years, top one percent, you guys are the best, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jean Sanchez, JPA.
Good, good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. So this is a presentation about the joint planning agreement, which is set to expire if um. We either receive a non-renewal or we send a non-renewal to Orange County. Now, first off, I'd like to just um clarify that um I'm not asking for an action tonight. This is merely just a presentation, but you will have an opportunity to act on it at the next city council meeting. So just as a refresher, excuse me, the purpose of the JPA agreement was to resolve prior litigation. Between the city and county and it establishes a framework for coordinated planning and development in shared areas, particularly within the Wakava. Study area and the Wakava River Protection Area. The main provisions include definition of geographic boundaries, assignment of land use authority based on whether land is annexed or unincorporated. Um enforcement of environmental and land use protections per the Wakava Parkway Protection Act. Also establishes limits and protocols on annexations within the JPA and identifies responsibilities for public road maintenance. Also mandates coordination of utilities and school capacity. And requires mutual notifications and opportunities for comment on zoning and land use amendments and development actions. Now, in terms of term and renewal, the original term ends um this year on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And it automatically renews for five years unless either party, the city or county. Um sends a notice of non-renewal at least a hundred and eighty days before the expiration date, which puts us um on July fourth, twenty twenty-five. If there is no count, I'm I'm sorry, if neither side sends a non-renewal letter by that date, the JPA quietly continues through at least twenty thirty. Um like I said, there's no council decision needed today, um this briefing is simply to put the date on everyone's radar and staff will present this again. As an action item at the July second city council meeting and provide a recommendation, so council may choose to renew, renegotiate or terminate. Now, I also have a representative from Orange County planning tonight, in case you have any questions on maybe taking their temperature and what they would like to see happen. Um I know um our planning manager Bobby Howell is currently out of the office, but we have. Um started to have these discussions with Orange County months ago, um I think we have a little bit of consensus consensus on what that might be. Um it might require some extension for a year or two of the JPA, but um that's something y'all can decide on July second. And if you need more information before then, obviously we're here to 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 supplement your information.
So any questions?
Any questions for me?
I know I had a lot of questions, we spent like probably almost an hour going through this, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Just if we want, I know last time this was amended was back in two thousand and nineteen, correct? Is there any amendment that you guys foresee?
We would actually like an amendment to the whole agreement.
Okay, that's.
Um we kind of want to look into another type of similar agreement, perhaps an inter-local surface boundary agreement. Um Lake County I know does that right now with all their municipalities, um but we haven't completely taken the temperature. And really worked towards an actual framework of that just yet.
Do you have any idea about, because I know we count this as kind of the framework and really important, have have you looked at it or is there a timeframe, we're going to be analyzing that other agreement that Lake County has?
Um between with with my discussion with Orange County, just preliminary ones, I think we're going to need maybe a couple of years of extension. Um, between, with with my discussion with Orange County, just preliminary ones, I think we're gonna need maybe a couple of years of extension.
Okay.
Um, to kind of look and explore which agreement would fit best that would benefit both the the city and the county.
So, my question is, you're saying that if we were to renew this, we can set a time? Like in other words, renew for a year, renew for two years. If we don't specify that, it automatically gets reviewed. I'm sorry, renewed for five years.
That, yes ma'am, that's my understanding for until twenty-thirty.
Until twenty-thirty?
Yep.
So, this was done, which is interesting, it was done twenty-nineteen with twenty-twenty.
It was last amended twenty-nineteen. It was first um the settlement was done in, correct, two thousand and four.
And then the third, so when we make these amendments, what's the, like, does it extend the agreement?
Only if you choose to amend the term, um the key clause, I I cited the section on there for the key clause of the term. Um, the last time we did it, I don't recall that we actually amended the term. I recall that we only added um additional territory to the JPA, which included the what you the rubric properties, what you now know as all the huge industrial areas by the airport.
Yeah, I didn't see anything regarding terms. It was just kind of amendments that were amended.
Commissioner Smith?
You'll give us the opportunity if we have questions to come and sit down with you.
Of, of course. Yes.
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Nesta?
I think it would be valuable to hear from Orange County if we can, just to kinda get their side of it too, just kinda see what that sentiment is.
Yes.
Um, and just kind of understand where we're going. And also, and we spoke about this during our our um agenda review is that there's, there's a lot in here uh in this agreement, the original one, that I mean, even speaks about annexing South Apopka in there. So, I, there's a lot of discussion I think we need to have on that and and what the true uh sentiment or the the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish with it. So, just, just a thought. But yeah, I would love to hear from Orange County as well.
Sure.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Um, we certainly.
Just the mic and just if you could speak a little.
We have certainly enjoyed working in our partnership with the City of Apopka and I do believe that um the joint planning area agreement certainly makes, you know, future planning annexations in the process much smoother. Uh, we do have joint planning area agreements with other municipalities within Orange County, including Oakland-to-Coe, Winter Garden, Winter Park. And I feel like I'm missing one, but uh recently uh the Orange County Charter was amended where um two sections were added to the Charter, section five oh four, which um relates to the exclusive method for voluntary annexations. And one of the first things it does is it does exempt municipalities that have JPAs from those requirements. And section five oh six was added to the Charter, which created a rural boundary in a rural area. And um in defining that area, municipalities with joint planning area boundaries were excluded from that area. So, when making your decision, you might wanna consider the uh pros and cons in weighing um what, what that means to you as a city.
So, is the county looking, would would your recommendation be like a two-year?
I think it would be helpful for us to, while two years may seem like a long time, it goes very quickly, especially when you're working together on a project. It's something that is important is this, where that collaboration and continued meeting um is very beneficial to um to everyone.
Well, thank you for that. And thank you for being here tonight too. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. All right. Okay, so, anything else for Jean? If not, we'll look for, I guess, just.
Now, this is a presentation.
Right, I understand that, I understand that. Um, so, look to bring this back at the next council meeting?
Well, it has to because it expires July fourth.
Well, if we don't, we don't, it would automatically renew, so would you like to bring it back?
Oh, no, I would like to bring it back.
Thank you. Thanks, Jean. Appreciate it.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to consent, we've got uh eight consent agenda items. Anybody need to pull any of those?
Uh, just number eight.
Okay. Um, anybody from the public wanna pull any of these items? If not, okay, we'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda items, number one through seven.
So, move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries now to sleep. Okay, Lance, I guess we wanna.
Well, in, in real, what this is and and, I mean, feel free to come up please, but it's more so out to, to uh table this to the next meeting, just to have time to review. There was an email I just received um right before the meeting that answered some of my questions, hopefully. So, I just wanna make sure I understand the answers to those questions before approving that. So, I'd like to table it just to the next meeting so that I make sure I understand what's going on.
Look for motion to table the City of Apopka FY twenty-twenty-five budget axle for the eight months ending May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Except the disbursement report, I'm sorry. Report, uh, got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries now to sleep.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Matthews Hope.
Good evening. Brad Williams, interim city administrator. Here tonight to uh bring back after the presentation from last week, our last council meeting, uh a license agreement um potentially with Matthews Hope Ministries, Inc., to allow them access to provide their bus on city property. Um, the term for the agreement initially would be one year with a mu- mutual option to renew and extend. Uh, one question that is still left to be answered is the number of vehicles to be parked and stored or parked, stored on city property um uh each night. Uh, staff have looked at some potential city properties, uh including the lot behind the City Q Island at three-twenty East Eighth Street, the East Eighth Street property at two oh seven East Eighth Street. Uh, Poppy Police Department parking lot, uh overflow area, the, and the McBride Cemetery property. I've pulled those up on the map here and identified them. I do know uh Pastor Blue is here. If there's any questions, um just looking for direction from the council, whether you would like to proceed uh and finalize agreement.
I think Pastor Blue wants to kinda talk about some things he'd like to look at that agreement, maybe wanna to uh to maybe modify. So, Cliff, if you're, he's, I know that, some ideas.
Oh, it's easy. The, the, the only concern that we really had, our, our attorneys also looked over the piece. It's, it's pretty basic standard stuff. Um, uh, I, nothing that I think that we need to really look at or are concerned about. The um, the one question I had, and I shared that with the mayor, was there was a piece in that that talked about uh letting you know basically daily, if I understood it right and read it right, uh that we would be here or not. The, that becomes a little bit of a challenge, where, cause there's a lot that goes into making sure this bus is here and ready to go with security and all that. So, what we talked about is more of, once we get into a flow of actually giving a schedule. Cause the hope is, especially if we have multiple locations and we do have people in the community, we've had some churches that have shown interest in, in hosting it. And the beauty of that is if they wanna provide a meal or some other additional services to what we're doing, I think that's fantastic. It shows uh community cooperation and and working together. Uh, so the idea of having these locations and possibly additional ones where we can say, here's our schedule. Uh, because basically the idea behind it is we will take a reservation system that you can stay up to three nights. Okay, that does not, again, I wanna remind everybody those buses don't stay here during the day. They're gone and they, they're reset up for the next night. But the reason we did three nights was, one is for management purposes. But number two, it's been proven through studies that if you're sleep deprived, which is definitely our homeless population, it takes about three days to get your body kinda getting back in the right flow, three nights of solid rest. So, that's where that number comes from. The other idea behind it is, is obviously, we're gonna start with one bus to answer that question. Um, and that bus would be throughout West Orange County. However, that said, it's going to be used where we have that cooperation and then that ability to work with with the city and 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 other organizations within the city. Uh, but the other idea behind it is there's only twenty sleeping su- slots. You have a whole lot more than twenty homeless people. So, it may make sense that we have a couple different locations, so we stay at one for three nights. And we move to another three nights. And I assured the mayor that once, again, we gotta get into the flow, understand who our partners are within the city and be able to sit there and say, okay, our plan is to be at such and such place for three nights. That's gonna be followed up by such and such place for an additional three nights and so on and so forth. So, it's, it's, it just allows us to get into a flow in understanding. I, I think that initially, you typically, when you, when you do a project like this, you get a lot of enthusiasm at the beginning and you have maybe ten churches or so that wanna work with you. When it all said and done, it narrows down to two or three. Um, and, and like, again, if there's other nonprofits in the area that makes sense for the, the homeless population, we wanna be able to do that. Obviously, you know, we have talked, or there was some mention that last time we were here about the possibility of some type of, of location over here at some point. We think that would be a huge positive for both Matthews Hope and for the city. Uh, one, it cuts your co- cuts our costs down. And so, since we're not so much, we're not really asking financial support from the city. But if you can partner with us in keeping our expenses down, all the better, because they, they are expensive to, to move around. They are the size of a Greyhound bus. Uh, I'm not sure what the exact mileage, but it's much less than anybody's car here. Um, so, any other questions besides that? I, hopefully, I covered those few.
Yeah, any, any questions?
So, so my understanding, you'll, you'll be coming with the bus. Is it a weekly thing that you come here just for three nights in a row?
What will happen is those buses will come into the city roughly around, let's say, seven, eight P M. We will have pickup locations because we don't wanna set a location, have people. I, I don't know how to compare it other than this. Is you set some, the mistake that I think this has been made in other places has been when they've set a bus somewhere and they just tell people it's gonna be there. First, you're gonna get more than twenty people to show up, right? Who's gonna tell who not, who doesn't get on? That's why it's a res- reservation system. Uh, number two, I don't think from an optical standpoint, and, and the truth is, we have to pay attention to optics. Uh, you just do, is you don't want people, I, I picture almost like zombie-like walking towards this bus from different places in the city. Uh, we don't wanna do that. So, we'll have pickup locations and then we stop at that location, say from eight P M until seven A M. the next morning and then release those folks. So, we're gonna take them back to where we found, just like when we come into the city right now. Uh, a few times, two, two times, we're here four days a week, but two days a week, our buses come in early in the morning, pick people up, bring them back to Winter Garden for their medical care, mental health care, showers, so on and so forth. And then we return them right back to where we br- picked them up at. We don't choose though those, those loca- locations because if we choose a location, then it's our fault uh that, that, you know, we're picking up there. We go to where the people go, so we follow the flow. Did that answer your question?
It does.
Clearly, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so you actually will bring the bus, but then you'll have uh another, I guess, smaller bus that goes around?
No, we'll pick up, let's, let, the best example I could give you is, is let's say we took, took four churches and we use them as pickup locations.
Right.
So, when that reservation was made, it would be say, okay, Miss Diane's pickup is this spot. We pick her up. We bring them to that location, to wherever we're staying for the night, and we return them back to that same place the next morning.
How do they give, how do you get the reservations? Do you get them from the?
Ma'am, I have so much contact with your homeless people. I can tell them by name and tell you their birthdate if you'd like. We, we have, there, there's a couple of different things. We can use it within our current system.
Okay.
So, right now, we have twice a week, like I said, we're taking people in, and two days a week, we're also coming in here. So, that, that will actually be within, uh, if you can imagine, just a POS system is the best way to describe it. With everything else, the information we're tracking, we're able to do the reservation within that.
So, when you drop them, return them back. Um, have they been fed already or before they leave the bus, do you, or they provided any?
Each, each day could be a different situation. Our biggest thing is to allow them to have a safe place to rest. Ho- however, that said, the plan would be to have some sandwiches and some basic things. Obviously, I can't provide the same meal I do over there. Uh, there, this could, there's a lot of different ways this could work, depending how much services that we find these people need that they're already not getting from us. If there's more, there's not a problem with us transporting people back to, to Winter Garden once again for additional services. But we're finding in that two-day period, we can cover just about everything they need because we're subsidizing that, for lack of a better term, the other two days that are here. Also, understanding what the structure is here in Apopka, where people are being fed different days throughout the week.
Yeah.
We know who's feeding on Sunday, we knew who's feeding on Monday, Friday, and what have you.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, you said, I, I read that you have this in Brevard County and it's been successful.
No, ma'am. We're in, in Brevard County, we have three buses currently that have been put under, under contract that are com- going into service there. We took ideas that we saw from around the country and basically, you know, people ask me, how did I start Matthews Hope fifteen years ago? I think I told you this a number of years ago. I said, I watched what everybody else was doing and did ju- just the opposite. I mean, that's just the truth. We, we learn from other people's mistakes before we look to make that kind of investment. Because anything we do, even when it's grant-based, I don't see the reason for going into something for a one-year term and then, and then shut- shutting it down. So, everything we do, we are always looking ahead. How do you make sure that service, the services and the stewardship of those funds go further into the future? And so, we're always looking at that. So, our plan, this is a long-term obligation we're making. And right now, that consists for one, one bus going into Orange County, West Orange County, and our three buses over there. They will not be, they're, they're two separate budgets, two different.
They are separate.
Yep, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, I'd say my understanding was that you were already working out of Brevard, so I wanted to ask you how that was working.
No, ma'am, I can't, I can't give you, I, what I can tell you is that we established ourselves in Brevard three years ago in June. And we uh, we are already matching the numbers we're doing Orange County. Uh, we have about a thousand touches a week right now. It's a lot, a lot of people, men, women, and children. We're also keeping in mind too, is our goal is to, with each of these folks, is to be able to connect them with additional services they might need. Right now, what we're seeing is a huge influx of, of baby boomers. Thirty-one percent of everybody we see first time homeless, never been homeless before, is a baby boomer. And that is a relatively new number that we're gonna see for the next twenty, twenty-five years. If you consider baby boomers started in nineteen forty-two, I believe it was, through nineteen sixty-eight.
No, it's forty-six too, cause we're baby boomers.
So, well, so am I, but I'm at the other end of it.
Nineteen forty-six, I think, to um.
Was, it went past sixty-two. I can't, yeah, it's, but basically the, the, the point is, it's a, it's a twenty-five year span roughly. And, and the best example I can give that is my own family. My mom's mu- uh husband passed away at forty-five years uh just five weeks ago. Her income went from a hundred and nine thousand to twenty-nine thousand overnight. And I'm there to help make sure she doesn't become homeless, but what happens is a lot of these folks don't have that support system. And what they don't realize, even though she has a military discount, a military income coming to her, David's been gone almost six, over, coming up on six weeks, she's yet to receive her first check. And so, what happens is people don't realize that gap, if there's no way to fill that gap, that's where these people are losing their cars, losing their homes and whatso. So, a lot of what we do is, is trying to figure out how we fill that gap, make sure we keep those people housed. It, it went from that end, but our, but typically by the time they've come to us, they've already fallen through all those cracks. You know, we're, we're kinda the last stop. Once you fall through all the other la- cracks, that's when Matthews Hope shows up.
Yeah, you've been very passionate. I know I've been here and uh for the last ten years I have seen Matthews Hope grow. And um you, you're very passionate about what you do and.
Yeah, there's no, if you're not gonna do it with excellence, don't bother. I do it for the money.
I don't believe that at all, but.
I, I just, sometimes I just, you know, it, you just sit there, there's just no amount of money it's worth doing this job. But what is interesting though is when you see the light come on, uh, that's the best way I know how to describe it. When you see that light come back on, on someone's li- light in their eyes and you see that opportunity for them to become independent, self-sufficient. Because part of what the buses are doing, kinda like when we opened, is a shelter. You know, we, we sheltered sixty-five people out of Apopka uh during the, the storms and during cold weather, and we went over a hundred and twenty-some? This last time around, the number's growing big time. And what that does, anytime we have an opportunity to have that much contact with them ongoing, is allows us to evaluate, kinda cherry pick, if you will. We're looking for the low-hanging fruit. Who are those people that we have the best chance of getting out of homelessness the fastest? And often, when we're dealing with them on that, that much time together, you start to see who those people are. And often, when we're dealing with them on that that much time together, you start to see who those people are. It's not that we're ignoring the others either, but the reality of it is, I can take a single mom who's been homeless six months off the streets relatively fast. As opposed to taking someone who's already been on the streets for five years. Okay, it's a whole different mindset, the the mentality of the mental health aspect of it. There's so many other parts that play into it at that point. Any other questions?
Mr. Anderson, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank what you do. Um, I think that the, we we already kind of spoke about it, um, last city council meeting, I think that it's definitely needed and I understand this is a new project, so there are going to be some growing pains, but we're here to support in any capacity we can. So thank you for what you're doing.
Well, and the good news too, thank you, is is that because it's been a process for us over in Brevard. We're learning through the process that makes this one faster. I will say, to have the bus completely done is going to be towards, would be towards the end of this year. But there's that much that has to happen. There's all these little things like the the main thing we need right now is going to be a letter from the city. Basically telling us exactly what this does and saying that we have that commitment for a place to park it. That's where Orange County steps back in. And they're ready to move forward with this because they want to make sure, you know, one of the challenges everybody ran into and they're, they've run into this in Orlando with some some, a similar type project. Was those buses become R Vs, okay? And so then it was like, well, we don't have any kind of code set up for an R V to park someplace. Well, you know, we can spend a whole lot of time and money trying to figure that one out, or we try to figure out how do people get off the streets. And that's why we just felt the best way route to go was go directly to the city of Apopka. Say, this is what we what we want to do. This is how we're going to do it. And if we have that blessing, then we can continue on with that. We should be able to be on the road by the end of the year. But that's the, that's the key piece that they're going to need from us.
Commissioner Smith?
I just want to say thank you for all you do and we're here to support you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. By the way, I wish I could wear a suit like that.
Only he can get away with it.
Yeah, I can't.
Commissioner Nesta?
Uh, just thank you for being here tonight. I really appreciate you and your team's efforts uh with this project, especially helping our individuals in need here locally. It's definitely impactful. And I appreciate that you guys have presented this to us, came to us and and helped with this. So just a couple of questions or or just reiterations on um some things we've already discussed, but just want to make sure we're on the same page here. So the funding for the buses themselves are coming, well, they're not coming from us.
They're not coming from you.
Okay.
No, no. Now, feel free, Commissioner, I want you to understand that I've never turned down any money in support of our ministry. So if you feel you found something, I mean, I would, you know, I shared with the mayor a little bit in a conversation that one of the things we've done in some areas. These these buses are set up to be able to run off a generator uh where you can plug in and they can all, then they also run off fuel. Obviously, it's cheaper to plug them into a generator uh that. So what we've done in some areas, we've worked out to where we've had that phase. You could preferably, it's it's a uh fifty amp. You can do thirty, but a fifty will run all the air conditioners and everything else. Thirty, I think, runs two of the three. And uh, you know, if there's ability to have that at places, that is two things. It makes it quieter. Obviously, because it's runoff electricity instead of fuel, and number two, it brings your cost down. So anything that we can find ways of of that the city might help us cut costs as opposed to asking you to do something that there's some way to cut costs, that's what we're going to try to do, because that just allows the program to prolong that much longer. And and people need to say, and I feel like every time I go in front of a group, we need to all understand, this is not going to solve the homeless issue. Uh, this is a bridge and it's a start. Uh, but what it will do, especially in light of the new laws that are in place. Uh, it it allows to be, to treat people more with humane dignity. And and I think that's that's a key part. I mean, I did, I was just in Boston. I actually uh was up at three o'clock this morning to get back here. Uh, but I found it very interesting in the middle of a Boston park that I saw the police department serving Italian ices. Okay, okay, and homeless people sitting right over there and everybody coexisting in this area and no one's having a problem. I think sometimes it's really easy to make a problem out of a non-problem. What we need to do often is focus on individuals. You know, when somebody gets mad at the city, should they meet ban the whole city or is there someone in particular they're upset with? It's like everything else. You have to look at things like that. We feel like us coming in this way is going to help us even promote a better understanding of what homelessness looks like and what people are facing here in this community.
Absolutely. Okay. And then so and and we spoke about this too, security on the bus.
Yes.
And that, I guess, walk us through that.
Okay, yeah, we we are actually contracting with a security firm. Uh, we have chosen to go non, uh, there's non-lethal weapons, so they will have things like tasers and that, what have you. Uh, but a security firm, that way we always have access to having someone on that bus at all times. Uh, we're also outfitted with cameras. Our cameras are more for the after. You can't stop something, you see it on the camera. What you can do is go back and look what actually happened. And each of our campuses, we have two of them, and they both have fifty cameras, a facial recognition at three hundred feet. So I've never understood why the seven eleven can't tell you who robbed the place. Uh, I can tell you what color their eyes are and how many chint uh uh hair sprouts they have on their face. So, you know, it's it's top-notch technology, but it's, again, it 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 doesn't cost that much to do the best than it does to do the cheapest. And most people just don't look at it that way.
No, completely agree. I think that's great. The, so the timeline would be end of the year then?
Yes, sir.
Somewhere in that, in that line. And then and then I'm glad you you touched on the generator side of things too. So you have kind of a self-contained unit on this bus. Should should we not be able to provide any other um power sources?
Yeah.
You'll be.
It it's fully self-contained. It has a bathroom and all that. Again, the ideal situation is if you're at a church and they say, hey, we have access to your restrooms. That'd be preferred because then I don't have to dump my tanks. You know, there's a lot of little things you can do to not only save money, just save aggravation, but it's fully self-contained. It will run all by itself wherever we put it.
Okay, understood. And the only other, I guess, question or or kind of request from your guys' side is, I, so I drove all these sites yesterday, got out, kind of looked at them. The only one that I think works for the size of the vehicle you're trying to use is the 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 top one, the lot behind City Fuel Island. As kind of a plug-and-play, one to be able to use right now. Uh, the other ones are either fully treed right now that we'd have to clear, the Apopka parking lot, uh, the P D parking lot. Just logistically, that one I don't think makes sense. And the McBride property, although again, it's a great site, there's a lot of topography there that's sloping, so we'd have to create a pad. Again, I'm I'm for that. It's just kind of the plug-and-play now would be that top lot um behind the City Fuel Island. The only request, I guess, on your guys' side is there's some power lines though in that area, so I don't know what the height is of your bus that will be coming in. So I just want to make sure that we're um getting ahead of that. Should that become an issue, we can.
We certainly find that out.
Okay.
Yeah, I I I can't really tell you. Never thought of it, but I'm sure, yeah, it's uh, you now you also would be surprised with a professional driver where they can put these things.
Sure. No, I've seen it. It's impressive.
You don't want me to see a park out here, but I know they could park it out.
Yes, absolutely. And then maybe uh for uh Mr. Williams, are we, should we be able to, I mean, if if the 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 City Fuel Island lot does work? There is power out there. Are we able to get a fifty amp uh plug-in out there? Is that, or can we look into that?
It's something we could explore, for sure.
Yeah, let's see. I know there's power lines out there. I just, it's not like you can just take a power line and plug it in. So I don't know logistics behind that, but. Yeah, so there, that would be great, I think, just again, to help and kind of streamline the process for you guys as well. Thank you again. That that's all my questions. I look forward to partnering with you guys in this capacity.
Appreciate it.
All right, anybody from the public we should speak on this one? Okay, we're, we'll close this public hearing and I guess anybody else have a thought on the location? We just, as Bradley and I just sat down, we wanted to put some 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 ideas down. Now, what I would, what I'd like recommend or or ask the the council for approval is to to maybe add. Um, if we want to add other private properties, because because uh Scott Blue just said that maybe some churches might want to house them. Like First Baptist, you know, they do Monday night feeding. Maybe they would do it in their parking lot for three days. Maybe um First Pres or or one family would do it for three days. So what I'd like to do is let let, you know, if you'll give me the authority, working with Cliff, is this, just, we can, we can, if everybody's good with the lot behind City Fuel Island. Or uh other private properties. And then the other, the last thing that he brought up is the daily reporting. Weekly, monthly, what would, what would work for you, Scott?
I I, early on, uh, I'm rarely at a loss for words, but early on, it's probably going to get a little tougher. Once we get an idea exactly, I think that we could actually tell you what our plan is for the next month. Here's, here's where we plan to be. Uh, certainly a a few weeks, but I don't see why, you know, again, I'm I'm doing this from a you know, a thousand miles up, but I think that realistically, there's no reason we can't do that if we have the commitments to go there. And and the good thing about this too is, like I said, with with my preference would be that we don't pick exact spot at this point, but we look at this as four spots as possible as, and and that we put in there that we're examining other opportunities. And then, because all I need to be able to go back to the county with is saying, we've identified some locations. Obviously, any location you pick is probably going to have to have something done to it.
Correct.
You know, and then what we'll do is we, once we have that in place, then we can go out to the different properties also. And I might even get with my driver people and say, hey, tell me what's my challenge coming in and out of here. You know, I can drive it, but I don't think you want me to do that. So long as I only got fifteen, I just learned that recently. If I only have fifteen people, they would let me drive that. That's insane.
So back, back, so we're, I'm good with that. Now, back to the weekly or monthly, or what, you you, do you give me an?
I don't have a problem with the monthly.
Okay, monthly, okay.
And I think the cha, and mayor, if 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 we found that that was a challenge, we could absolutely come to you and do that. I I think that, because my goal is for us, planning purposes.
Sure.
Because we want to be able to do those reservations. You can't say do a reservation and move the hotel next week.
Yeah. We just didn't want, you were, you were, you didn't want to have it daily, so that's what I'm trying to get.
Yeah, day, day, well, because, yeah, daily just makes it a challenge to sit there and go, can we be here such and such time, what have you?
Well, I, my question there, what's the goal of having that kind of approval on a monthly basis? And isn't this agreement a one-year approval, so to speak, of that? I guess what's the impetus for wanting a a consistent approval?
Commissioner, I think, uh, I think the benefit for the city standpoint is that the city staff would know where that bus is. So our fire and police services would would have advanced notice.
So instead of approval, can it just be a notice provided versus an approval? Because I think, again, this agreement is the approval. I would see as like that annual approval. And it has terms and and um ability for us to cancel if we need to, if something's not working out, if we're not, or both sides. So I think that already is in there. It's just maybe a notification versus an approval, I think, would be more.
And what and what the mayor and I speak about, and I don't want to misspeak, mayors, correct me if I'm wrong, it it's really more of saying, here's where we're going to be. And and know this, trying to give a a scheduling out as opposed to, oh, we're here.
Right, yeah, so just notification, I think, is the.
I mean, personally, I love the idea of being in the police department parking lot. I mean, seriously, I I do, if it parks there, I I love that.
Drive it and see if you can fit in there.
Oh, yeah, I will. We'll get the drive.
Then that, you know, they, if we're going to speak about that too, the the, our issue is that we have, I don't know how many vehicles, fifteen, twenty, thirty, brand-new vehicles sitting out there. I don't know where I'm putting those.
Yeah, well, there you go.
So agreed.
So. It's answered.
Yeah, so that one's not going to be great. The only other concern too is, and this is for Attorney Shepherd. Would it make sense for uh Matthews Hope to just deal directly with private property owners versus including them in our agreement? It it kind of muddies the waters for hours and that doesn't open us up to some liability there. Let them streamline it with owners directly.
There, there's not an issue with it except notice to the city, as the uh Bradley said, about where we need to be able to provide services if needed.
So we could put in there anywhere, just provide notice when you're in the city.
I think with with Orange County, their biggest concern was if if we spent the money, we put the bus in the road and all of a sudden, there's no place to park it. You just spent quite a bit of money for no reason.
Sure.
And so they were looking for that commitment. E- each municipality is different. Some of them just don't care. I I mean, I I don't mean it that way. It's just like, hey, you know, we love the idea. If they want you to park there, we're going to leave that alone. If you'd like the police to do a drive-by on occasion, they can do that type of thing. And then with this, it's a little bit more formal, um, which is fine with us as well. But I think the biggest part was just being able to sit there and go, before we pull the trigger to spend this kind of money.
We have.
That we got the backing. Apopka says, hey, we're we're behind this and we're gonna, we're not going to be a a roadblock to Matthews Hope being able to park this bus at a local church. Uh, that was already discussed in one area in Akoi. Uh, we had a church that that wanted to give us a, the the Church of the Cross, which has been a big partner of ours. That's the place everybody pulls pulls over, right? Okay, and um, and and we had to get some special permission to do that. The church should, felt like, well, we should be able to do that within our five oh one C three, which I tend to agree with. However, we're looking to be a good neighbor, so we said, okay, let's make sure that whatever the county is going to do. So I can tell you that Nicole Wilson is talking with with uh making some changes to some of the ongoing codes. Because they think this is going to be something that's going to be uh talked about more and more in the future.
Okay.
Because most nobody wants a brick and mortar.
Yeah.
That's just the truth.
No, absolutely. And and, yeah, I ju, I just think if you guys, you have already said you have communications relationships with private property owners. I think it makes sense for you to run with those and and if there's new agreements. And then for us, if, for, again, for notice purposes, you just provide, hey, where's your bus going to be at? And like you said, you'll be, you'll know a month in advance and probably with the way you guys work, you'll know six months in advance. So um, so I think kind of keeping our um agreement clean, just with our properties, and then you'll have um just notice to let us know where you're at.
Yeah, like I said, if if that letter can somehow just be worded in such a way that 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 uh that City of Apopka is is looking at us as a partner in the community as opposed to you know, someone showing, I'm saying you guys can't be here. Uh, because that that does happen in places.
Sure.
And before you make that investment, because it is a significant investment.
Okay, so I guess, what I guess I'd like to do is try to get the, if we can get the council to give me the authority, work with Cliff Shepherd to um use the city property at uh three twenty East Eighth Street or other private properties for the um, for parking the bus. And then we'll, we're, we're asking that uh Matthews Hope give us a monthly notice. Give us, give me authority, we'll get that squared away with with Scott. And so just I, for our, before we close, I want to uh thanks uh David Choriz from First Baptist was here earlier, but he had church service and so he left before, but he was here for your presentation.
Okay, yes, I saw it, yeah.
Yeah, 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 David Choriz and a couple of his folks were here. So anyway, with that, look for a motion to give the mayor authority to work with Cliff Shepherd on the uh, the city property at three twenty East Eighth Street or other ci- city properties. Or private properties with a uh monthly notice. So my motion by Commissioner Nesta, same like Commissioner Smith, all those in favor. All opposed, motion carries now.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
Uh, Riley, why don't we get Glenn up and get them out since, get him out? Uh, yes. Thank you. I just thought, yeah, we, everything else would be internal that way. Yeah, we're just going to, we're going to jump over to to number three.
Yeah, this is the update on the investment portfolio.
Yes.
Yes, we have Glenn Scott and Tricia Mingo here to give an update on the investment portfolio and some proposed investment opportunities.
Hello, Tricia Mingo with Morgan Stanley. Thank you, mayor and commissioners, for having us here again tonight. We would like to go over the investments for the first quarter of twenty twenty-five for this city. Here, we're going, I'm going to go ahead and start with just the portfolio characteristics. In your top left-hand corner, this is your cash and fixed income summary. It'll detail cash of a hundred and thirty-six million approximately. Money market funds, about twenty-four million, and your fixed income securities that we invest for you, about sixty-four million. This gives you a book yield as of five thirty of four spot two nine eight. Moving into the, or to the right is your security type. This gives a breakdown of the percentages of each um investment bucket. And your demand deposit, those are your bank accounts, so that's Seacoast and Sanovis. They're at sixty-one percent of your portfolio. U S government treasuries are at twenty-six percent. Local government investment pool, which is the S B A, that is at uh ten percent. You do own one corporate uh note security, it's two point, about two percent. And then money fu, money market funds, that's the interest that goes from your Sanovis account into um the federated money market fund that just sweeps over there and then will get reinvested once it gets to a certain amount. The bottom graph shows your duration. As you can see, most of your duration is overnight. That's your um Sanovis, which is and your other cash is about a hundred and fifty million. And then the next slide here. Um, this is just a detailed list of the city's securities and cash investments as of right now. One thing the council needs to be aware of is that Sanovis is again over its fifty percent um threshold according to your investment policy. One thing the council needs to be aware of is that Sanovis is, again, over its fifty percent threshold according to your investment policy. So there's about ten million that we need to move out of Sanovis. And there's three options. You can move it into Seacoast. You can, and Seacoast as of, let's see here, I have it down here, as of five, the end of May was yielding three point four-five percent. You can move it over to the SBA. At the end of May, it was yielding four point four-eight percent. Or we can go ahead and look at some securities to invest for the city. Normally, we will do two five-million-dollar investments for the city. But we just need to go ahead and get that money moved out of there to get back in alignment with the IPS. And then now I will go ahead and send it over to Glenn.
Thank you, Council. What we're looking at here is just a snapshot of what's gone on with interest rates over the last year. The very light blue color is where the yield curve was a year ago. So this is U.S. Treasury yields. The bottom row is from three months on the left out to thirty years. State statutes, your, your investment policy limits you really to five years and end. And as just Trish just pointed out, the vast majority is really on the front end, the very far left of this curve. Vertical is interest rates. And then we had that period of time last year where the Fed was feeling like it was getting out in front of inflation. The COVID, certainly the COVID inflation surge had started to subside, and there was optimism that, that, that last movement of, of inflation below four percent and towards the two percent target would occur. So the worst, there was some cuts in overnight rates, as you can see. And then the two lines at the bottom there, the dark, the darkest is where we were three months ago, one quarter ago, and the sort of middle blue color there is where we're at right now. You can see the tremendous inversion of the curve, and that's highly suggestive of a looming inflation, uh, recessionary risk out in twenty-six or twenty-seven, mostly related to tariffs and other impacts and disruptions to the economy. So that's where we sit in terms of rates. The good news is we got a lot of the money, thanks to the program you all helped us implement. We got a lot of your money moved out and captured those yields as we, as we all talked about. And you did what happened and what we expected happened. So you got the money out and then earning higher yields for the foreseeable future until those securities mature off. This is, I, I'm going to go a little fast through this stuff, because we just, I mean, we're in the middle of a week where the Fed met this afternoon. It actually was fairly hawkish, meaning the Fed saw that there was greater resistance to the reduction of that last increment of inflation than they were anticipating. And so their likelihood, this is the graph of the likelihood of cuts to the short-term rates, which the Federal Reserve controls out into 2027. That graph now would be shortened. It would be fewer cuts this year, fewer cuts next year, fewer cuts in twenty-seven because of this resistance in inflation. And it's, and let's just face it, it's two major things and a third that's slightly effective. It's tariffs, it's geopolitical problems in the world. You know, going back to your opening prayer, if there's a prayer we need to say, it's for this week and what's going to go on. You know, if we're going into a war here, all bets are off on all these models. So, anyway, so I'll skip through that. And then, you know, I, I've provided you the forecast for interest rates again. You know, this is, this is a good lesson in models, and you guys, you know, we're, we're presenting one form of a model. You all deal with models in your role here at the city all the time. And models have two aspects to them. They can be precise and they can be accurate. And precision means the model's constructed correctly. If you put assumptions into the model, it will correctly predict what will happen. And if the assumptions that you put in turn out to be reality, it was a precise model. These models are precise. They backward test very well. But the assumptions going in completely garbage in, garbage out, and I'm just being honest with you. We have no idea what's going to go on in the next week. We have no idea what's going to go on with the tariff regimes. So the models are inaccurate. They're, they're, they're well-constructed, but they're not telling us really well what's going on. And this is a good example of what happens, not just in investing, in investment portfolios, but in all business and considerations to your capital plans, everything. It, the, the uncertainty in the economy today causes people pause of what to do. And that slows the economy down. So, uh, here we are. This is our interest rates. This is the, I'll, I'll call this the best guess of Morgan Stanley on the biggest banks in the country, but it's a guess, because the assumptions going in are driving everything, and we don't know what's going to happen in the near future. Same thing with the economic forecast. I, I guess the overall trend on the economic forecast is that we see inflation eventually coming down underneath the two percent target. And the growth rate of the economy slowing commensurally and unemployment slightly rising through the next year and a half. So getting back to your investment portfolio, probably a good idea to get that ten million dollars moved out, get it invested. We'll, we'll do it just treasuries. I don't think there's any reason to be going out and doing any even corporate, highly rated corporate securities. Stay safe, stay liquid, keep it simple, keep it safe, just as we go into these uncertain times. Lastly, we, oh, this is another, this is a, again, this is, I would call this background information for you. It's just looking at the impacts of big policy-level stuff going on. And I would say that tariffs override everything with the immigration policies being a, a secondary consideration against tariffs. The, the magnitude, where we end up with the number of people that leave the country, it's, it's, the, the workforce is a hundred and sixty million. So if we're moving out a million people, it's, it's obviously very consequential to those people and to the people that are working with them and all that. But in terms of the macro movements of the economy, it's not going to move the numbers really, really big. The tariff stuff is much more impactful of what's going on. And then the deregulation and, and the deregulation policies take years to really implement. And then the fiscal thing is just a problem we've talked about. Two-and-a-half trillion-dollar deficits for the foreseeable future are not sustainable. It will eventually cause the U.S. government to crowd out all capital formation in the country. And you will not be able to borrow, you'll be borrowing money against a Federal Reserve and a Treasury that will be borrowing at higher and higher interest rates to track capital to support two-and-a-half trillion-dollar deficits forever. So that will become a long-term problem that we got to contend with down the road here, but in the short run, it's not the big driver. We have, uh, just a real quick, you want me to do the cemetery fund?
Yeah.
Okay, real quick, as you recall, we had a discussion with the mayor and the council concerning the cemetery fund. So Florida statutes are written for the control of monies in your general fund and for typical municipal use. And it constrains you to a set of relatively short-term, relatively safe securities. But the legislature did envision situations where you would have monies that came into your, under your fiduciary control that maybe are more appropriate to be invested in a different way. So if you look at the 218415 statute, there's a provision in 16H that allows you to invest in other things you deem appropriate for funds you identify that need to be invested differently. And the discussion, conversation that we've had is that the cemetery funds are multi-decade funds that are being accumulated while plots are being sold. And then there's going to be a long-term liability of maintenance of those funds off into the future, way after I'm doing work with you guys, but, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the road. So the thought was that let's come up with a change to your investment policy that allows you to take advantage of where are effectively home little powers to craft a modification to your investment policy that will appropriately match the types of securities that are appropriate for those funds, which are long-term capital appreciation. And we propose that you invest or modify your statute, which takes a couple of sentences for, I'm sorry, for your IP, to allow for an investment in like a Vanguard super-low fee passive broadly-based equity fund. We will not charge, we're not going to charge you for any of this. Get it set up, and you guys will be off and running. And then mix it with an, with a low yield or low fee, a cash fund. And then make a determination over time as you watch how it, how it moves, over what is the appropriate balance between the equity and cash exposure. It's a simple, sharp portfolio theory that you take the broad index fund, you mix it with cash. That's the simplest way to create a portfolio that's very broadly diversified and identifies the appropriate amount of risk. That's true for everybody here, by the way. Just those two things will give you a portfolio that will perform exactly what you want it to do over time. So that's the modifications to your IP that we would need your city attorney to work on. I think it's pretty straightforward, it would be required. I can't write that, or I would not like to do that. But we'll, we'll help you review it and make sure it's implemented correctly. That's it.
Any questions for, for Glenn? Or Blanche?
So are we going to be removing ten million dollars and? Some Sanovis, okay. Are we going to be investing it into?
Well, we have options.
To the US.
So we can either go Seacoast, which is three point four-five, SBA, which is four point six. Or we can go into the treasuries, which probably averaging a little bit less than what the SBA is. You know, the SBA, of course, is not a QPD, but it does, it does have, it's ongoingly has had the highest yield.
Do we have to move it all in the same place?
No, you don't.
Okay.
No, we just need to move it from Sanovis.
What's the recommendation?
Our, our ask would be that you allow us, sort of discretion, to make that determination, given the uncertainties of what's going on. That, you, all three are appropriate. Uh, all three are inside your policy. And things are changing rapidly here this week. So, you know, if we, if we think we should keep it short in cash, we'll do that. And if we think it's better to push it out by what goes on this week, we'll do that.
I just need clear direction, yeah. I need clear direction from council, make sure we still.
I'm sorry, sir. He said, at his discretion, is it in regards to which bank, if we choose a bank?
He's saying in, in regards to whether we invested into the treasuries
Treasury or the, okay.
or, or to Seacoast or to SBA.
Oh, got it, okay.
And when, when will he, when, Glenn, when do you think you'll make that decision?
I think we need to get these dollars invested within the next two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
But given that we have, you know, statements being made publicly that decisions about a war plan apparently has been approved. It's going to go down, you know.
And, 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 and were you making that decision? Would, would you put it all in one place, or would you split it up?
Most likely, we'll do one or the other. I mean, if we make a determination that, you know, we'll just get it invested in treasuries as a risk. Okay, like, let's say, no, no direct, no, no war, but there's a suspend, a sustained bombing campaign against Iran that really starts going after the oil facilities. That's going to be highly inflationary. It's going to drive down global growth rates significantly. And so that would be something we probably just want to buy treasuries against interest rates locked in. If we get into a war situation, probably just go straight into cash, either at the bank or at SBA. So you have highly liquid funds that are accessible if things get strange.
For the, and, and I'm comfortable with that. I mean, you kind of need to feel out what today even means in the next day, two, two weeks, all that. So I, I'm comfortable with that. On the cemetery side of things, how much money do we currently have invested? And then, not invested, excuse me, well, it, you're, we're calling it a fund, I guess, earmarked.
About a hundred and thirty thousand.
One thirty? Okay, and so that will be lump summed into, or we're going to split that up in half and half, basically? And so from there, we're going to take, I guess, on an, sorry.
No, that's.
Just want to make, okay, yes. Affirmative there. So then, on an ongoing basis, like a quarterly or annual basis, we'll continue to add?
Yeah, well, you'll, you continue to add, yeah, and we'll make an annual assessment of.
Okay, so on an annual basis, we will add to, to that, fifty-fifty, just keep growing that. So is there, have we done either internally or externally with any of our vendors, looked at kind of what our goal is? What, what's our maintenance, our general maintenance cost of cemetery going to be in twenty, thirty, fifty years? And what do I need that investment to cash flow at that time? Have we looked into that at all?
Long-term planning, Radley? I don't think we have.
No, I mean, you can look at the current operating budget that's outlined for the current operation. We can certainly put together some longer-range plans to try and help identify that.
And, and it's more so just to understand, is there, what's our goal? Are we meeting that goal annually or biannually? I mean, again, it's a long-term investment, so we can make corrections, we have time, but at the same time, what's that general goal? I, I think is important to, to understand as a whole, so. Awesome, well, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you guys for your time, and thank you for being here. We really appreciate it.
I need a formal approval.
Well, we, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to, I guess, to give Morgan Stanley the ability to, to move the ten million within the next two weeks. And then to invest the cemetery funds half in, what is it?
Well, we'll need an updated policy first, correct?
Yeah, we got to update policy.
We got to update the policy.
Okay, so we got, okay, so bring back the policy. So, uh, so all we need is the.
Just the ten million.
Okay, so look for motion to give Morgan Stanley the, the authority to move the ten million out of Sanovis and, and into the appropriate spot.
Yeah, I have to do a transfer to wherever we decide based on.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Take it by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for your kindness of bringing us up.
Yeah. All right, Radley.
Good evening again. Radley Williams, interim city administrator. Back of the May 21st, 2025 council meeting, City Council directed staff to bring back a nonprofit grant program structure. So I'm here tonight to review that, know that's been shared in the packet with you. And the intention of this is to bring a, a possible structure forward. If there's any tweaks or adjustments the council would like to make, we certainly make those. The Apocca Matching Grant Program provides financial assistance to schools and nonprofit organizations committed to supporting youth and senior-focused initiatives. This program is designed to build strong community partnerships and invest in projects to promote academic achievement, reduce juvenile crime, and enhance safety and well-being for both young people and senior citizens. Grant awards could range from five hundred dollars to five thousand dollars and would require a dollar-for-dollar match from applicants, which may include a combination of cash contributions and in-kind donations. Up here is a list of what the, what we've proposed as grant requirements, as far as eligibility, project criteria, and grant match. In the grant match category, we looked at in-kind goods or services being a maximum of fifty percent of the grant award. The remainder would need to be cash and no, no ma, um, limit on the cash contribution as a match. Some administrative requirements for the grant recipients. We would request some progress reports, basically highlighting the program objectives and outcomes that were identified in the grant application, performance measurements, financial reports, detailing their actual expenses and performance outcome. Any additional supporting documentations that, that might go with those financial reports. And the city would reserve the right to request a financial audit to ensure proper use of the grant funds. Uh, some project guidelines, two areas we're looking at were youth services. So anything from after-school, out-of-school enrichment, mental, physical, or behavioral health services, abuse or neglect, neglect prevention, or initiatives that promote healthy choices and positive decision-making, and also human services programs. These could be services designed to assist seniors, disabled individuals, and unhoused individuals. Programs that promote economic self-efficiency and food assistance or nutrition programs. We've identified, identified some recommended permitted uses and prohibited uses. Permitted uses would be for direct services of the program. So a new program development or expansion of existing programs, collaborations or partnerships through the community, direct assistance to targeted populations, electronics and hardware valued at less than a thousand dollars for program delivery, and then operating equipment, the same thing, valued at less than a thousand dollars for program delivery. Some areas that we're recommending funds not be used is to supplement an organization's regular operating budget, replace other sources of operating funding, supporting for-profit individuals or entities, entertainment expenses, indirect administrative costs, purchasing goods or services unrelated to the program's goals, electronic hardware or equipment over a thousand dollars. Uh, electronic hardware or equipment over a thousand dollars and uh costs related to background checks. That's licenses, insurance, that's kind of administrative costs. Uh, the proposed program would open a grant window if funding is, is authorized in the fiscal year budget on October first. So if approved in the budget this year, that window would open October first, twenty twenty five, which is a Wednesday. Uh, the window would close on Thursday, October thirtieth. And uh, you'd need to make sure the submission was received in that timeframe. We set up an electronic submission for documentation and also ask for all those documents provided in the list there. And just like grant, many grant programs, once you submit, uh, a grant and we pass the deadline, we wouldn't allow any changes. Uh, to help score and select and offer recommendations to council for awarding, uh, we recommend creating a review panel. Uh, the scoring criteria that, uh, staff propose is provided. And recommendation for the review panel would be for the mayor and commissioners to each appoint. A representative from the APOPC community to sit on the, the grant panel, review the grant applications once received. Uh, score them and then make a formal recommendation to city council for awarding. I did receive, uh, various notes throughout the week during our agenda prep meetings, so I just wanted to go ahead and put those up on the screen. I apologize if I missed a note, uh, when we met, but, uh, these are the notes from the commissioners when we met individually, so. If, uh, this could be a starting point for discussion. Again, staff wanted to put together a program model. That could work for this type of program and um make any adjustments requested by the council. I also do wanna give a thank you to Dr. Shakenya Jackson for her help on this program. She helped design this, did some research, and worked with me on this one, so.
All right, any questions for Radley?
No, I think, I mean, I would, I don't think it's for Radley, I think it's for us to kind of discuss, you know, which is, thank you for putting these notes up, I think this is very helpful. Uh, because those are exact points I was gonna bring up from, from my meeting, so, so thank you for that, so. Um, I, I'll just hit my points very specifically and concisely. Under the grant match, uh, it specifically says that in-kind or cash donations from city of APOPC-related organizations. Staff or elected officials cannot be counted as a match. Uh, my concerns were, were what are related organizations? What's the definition of that? Um, who, who are those or those? Anybody that is on our vendor list, is that? Um, uh, anybody, I, I, what's the definition there? And then I was concerned about elected officials. If I use personal, um, donations to, uh, to a organization. They shouldn't, they should be able to use that however they want, but I think that this was specifically stating using. City funds out of our discretionary funds to use that as if it's a match to other city funds. So I just wanted to make sure there was some type of, number one, definition of what related, related organizations meant. And then the specification that it was in reference to. Uh, our elected officials', um, discretionary funds and not our personal funds. Um, the other one was, uh, that I went through, uh, we don't have it there, but kind of the performance measurement rate, progress reports. I don't wanna be too specific on that because some of the programs that may come in may not have number of participants, serve daily or weekly. So just kind of provide a, a, a rubric almost, or a rough rubric of, uh, provide an update quarterly or monthly, whatever we prefer. That is specific to their program, whatever gets their goal accomplished, provide those updates. And then the, um, late submissions, because this is, is a new program for us, I was thinking that maybe we consider late submissions. Maybe we don't allocate all those funds at the same time, uh, or in those thirty-day periods, so let's open it up. Or allow late submissions just in case there is extra funds available. So I thought that that was beneficial and, and I'm seeing as well, um, Commissioner Smith, you had the same. Uh, thought I did as well of, of having kind of a second window, should all those funds not be allocated appropriately? Uh, or not, not, excuse me, not appropriately, but not all allocated at that one time. So I definitely think just opening it up at least this first year, just to kind of see how this performs. And if we see that all the money is gonna be allocated that first round, got it, no problem. But I just think keeping it a little bit open to allow, just in case some programs are, aren't approved and we close it quickly. That it provides that additional time for other organizations to jump in there. And, uh, again, because this is that first year, I think it's important. So just wanted to explain my, my, um, my points there.
And, and my concern was that only allowing the thirty days for submissions. And so I thought that we should have a, a, a second window, maybe halfway through the, uh, budget cycle. That there'll be another window open for another thirty days to allow for additional submissions. And, and then I, I, I guess I just noticed, uh, is this the hundred thousand dollars that was mentioned earlier? But, but then I noticed that the applications cannot be accepted. It says October first, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, so we could, we're coming up on the, we're past the halfway point of this fiscal year. If commission, uh, or council would like us to, they approve, y'all approve this, uh, program. We can certainly open a window for this year, or we'd have to re-budget the funds for the next fiscal year to start October one. But that would, again, at the pleasure of the council on that.
Well, personally, I'd like to see, since we've already allocated those funds for this budget year, that we go ahead and open up, uh, this, uh, program. Now, and allow for submissions, uh, and then whatever funds is not used, and we roll those over.
Would Dr. Jackson, uh, Dr. Shakenya Jackson be running this program or, or?
Yeah, uh, I think we'd still determine that with internally, but she would definitely be somebody involved in this process. So she's helping still, we still have, uh, the agreements and the contracts that need to be vetted through the city attorney's office. Uh, and then we have to set up the online portal. That can all be done relatively quickly, though.
Okay.
So.
So that, and that was what I was gonna ask, kind of what's, what's the lead time we need or staff need to, to implement it if we, if we do wanna do this?
I would think we could, we could probably get this started, um, by the latest August. So do an August opening, award it. So it's still awarded before the, uh, fiscal year ends.
And, and we would need, we would need to appoint our representatives for that. They would have to score them. And then they would come back to us at some point for approval, or would it just be?
No, we would bring it back to council for a, a awarding. So the, the committee would, uh, we'd have a meeting with the committee, let them score and rank the applicants. They would then provide a recommendation, which we would then bring to council for. So similar, if you remember the TDT grant scoring process, a similar type of structure, not as elaborate, but.
So we could have to kind of submit a name for a committee, like soon then.
Correct, yes.
Um, okay, so where do we determine, um, up to the, the minimum or the maximum that we will match?
It was. It was five hundred to five thousand, and again, that is up to the pleasure of the council. Those were numbers that staff felt were.
I'm sorry, I didn't, where was that?
It's at the very beginning.
What happened?
Very beginning.
So at the end?
Very beginning, the, the very first, uh, first purpose slide. I put it up.
Oh, there it is, there it is. I'm sorry. I went right to the grant, uh, requirements. Um, so, uh, of course, we had a speaker that came up and had some concerns about. Some of the, um, five oh one C threes that we have, that we currently have been supporting. Um, not being able to have an IE number, um, renewed. Uh, that they haven't filed a, I guess, a tax, was that what it was, a tax? Um, return or have filed their finances and how much their nonprofit actually went. The, the funds that they collected, how much actually went to the, the organization as opposed to operating expenses? Being, are we gonna have someone in, in the staff that will check?
They'll have to be, correct. There'll have to be an internal vetting process, so application will come in. City staff will have to do an internal vet on the application, and then the ones that pass the requirements and are verified. Would then go to the selection committee for scoring.
Okay, so I mean, we'll be opening it up. The grant program will be opening it up soon, but we haven't even, we haven't even put together a committee. And that committee, um, we each have an opportunity to put one person. Where does that get approved? That has to come back to council.
We could bring it to the next council meeting if you'd like, or if you approve it tonight, that that's how the committee will be selected. You could provide those and I could provide an update at the next meeting, uh, however you'd like to handle that. If you wanna be formal, we could bring it to the next meeting.
We can come up with an agreement. I think we, we, we bring the names for next, next meeting. By that time, if we get our staff putting together the, the internal documents so that it's ready to go, I mean, it'll take us two weeks to get it.
Correct.
And then we'll, we'll start immediately advertising for nonprofits to, to, uh, to apply. Commissioner Anderson, I'm sorry I cut you off.
No, it's okay. So, can you put that up? Thank you. So a few things. I know initially, so let's just start with the five hundred to five thousand dollar range. How are we gonna determine which organization? How, what, how, how are we gonna determine that?
So the organization would put in part of their grant application, the request for the fund amount that they're requesting. So based on the program they're running, they could request as little as five hundred or request as much as five thousand.
Were there any models that you've all seen where they actually had each, depending on the type of services provided? Depending on the range of funds that are available, they can request, because this is kind of open. They can ask for fifty thousand dollars. And if they're able to show, I mean, how can we determine?
Yeah, so I would say, I would say similar to as we went through with the TDT grant program. We developed a program proposal and put an amount on that. Um, now we're at, we are asking for them to provide matching funds, so that is gonna come into play as well on what matching funds they have available. Could impact that level.
I guess I'll give you an example. Let's just say they're providing senior, senior citizen services, right? They can get up, you know, ten thousand dollars, five thousand dollars. I still think it should be some type of basis. Um, because that'll help gauge how many nonprofits we're able to service, because if we don't put a dollar amount on there. We can use all the money up with three organizations.
Right, you could go, if you go, the assumption would be, if you're looking at the total number you could do. If everybody were awarded five thousand dollars, that's, that's your number.
Twenty, yeah, that's what we talked about.
So, that, again, but that's at the pleasure of the, of the council. Uh, typically for these grant programs, you put it on the applying agency to tell you what they need in their proposal.
And we can be, rest assured, nobody's gonna be under twenty-five hundred. I doubt, I doubt anybody will ask for less than five thousand. So then, so basically you're limiting it to.
Cause they're gonna ask for the, the five thousand max.
So that, that would be the number you'd wanna set. I mean, if that's, so it could come down, it could be twenty-five hundred dollars. We could halve that.
People involved, we had twenty-five hundred, that would still give you, that'd give you forty opportunities for, I mean, uh, but, or three thousand, whatever. You know, pick a number. I, I, just five, I'm just afraid we get down to just twenty.
Well, I, I, I think with the rigid guidelines that we have, you, you, I don't think you're gonna get twenty. Especially if you start asking for financial reports and now they gotta be five oh one C three qualified.
And it's matching, so that means that they also have, if they want five thousand, they're giving five thousand. So, um, uh, you know, I don't see everyone coming in and asking for five thousand if they can't show that they're can ma- that they're matching that.
Yeah, and, 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 and the reason why I was concerned about going ahead and getting it started this fiscal year. Because o- once we look at, uh, how many organizations we have to apply, and then if we don't get twenty organizations applying. Then undoubtedly something wrong with our rub- rubric, and then we may need to go back and tweak it.
And then if we get forty, we could tweak it the other way.
Yes, right.
I, I'm, I'm with you.
So I know I mentioned also, so that's, thank you for that. In regards to the, I guess, the organization, we have public and private schools. So we're opening this up for Orange County Public Schools to apply for funding.
Yeah, I think the intention was, was for like the booster clubs, like the APOPC School Band has taken a big trip to Europe this year. So that could be a club that could apply for funding. It's gonna be an enrichment program for the students. So they, and they plan those well in advance, so if a window opens in October. They probably have a trip, a larger plan for two years out from that. So to provide that opportunity and maybe have a school booster club or a sports team, sports booster club that, that's helping enrich the, the students. You know, that, that was a thought there.
Dream Lake Elementary that we assisted with their program as well.
Or maybe a PTA, a PTA, you know, a, an associated organization with the school. Um, or the school itself, if there's an opportunity that presents.
I don't know that we wanna, I, 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 to your point, I think, I don't think we wanna do it to the school, I think to a, an organization.
Maybe school organizations or school booster clubs.
SGA or something.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But Orange County's budget is a little bit larger than ours, so.
So yeah, that, we can cer- certainly make that edit.
Okay, and. So this was something else that was kind of alarming, and the prohibited uses, costs related to background checks. I think that we should encourage and support background checks, especially when they're working, working with youth and our senior citizens. So to say to exclude background checks, I think that is just reckless on our part, and I think we should be encouraging background checks. Just still prohibiting background checks.
Yeah, absolutely. That, that's something that if you wanna change, we can certainly change that. It's, it kind of lumped into the administrative cost and, and we did look at some others, similar programs and a lot of the administrative costs were prohibited. But none says we can't do that, and it does, to your point, encourage, uh, encourage that, so.
Okay, so get rid of, I think, I think we all agree, back, get rid of background checks, okay, good with that? That's on prohibited uses, cost related to, we'll leave licenses or insurance in there. So get rid of background checks.
We play way supplementing an organi-.
The last one.
Costs related to background checks, licenses. Just background checks.
Background checks.
Yeah.
Well, well, wasn't that a, a concern? I mean, um, when Dr. O came up, that was her concern.
No, we're gonna, that's now a permitted use.
They can actually have background checks. Because if someone wants to, if we're able to write them five thousand dollars to add more services and they have to hire someone else to assist.
They need a background.
They need a background check.
Yes.
We shouldn't be excluding.
Matter of fact, we should probably just move that back up to permitted use.
Yeah.
Radley, so just take it, scratch it from per- prohibited and add it to.
Permitted.
Permitted.
Yeah.
Costs related to background checks, license. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm lost.
Well, so on that one line, we're gonna take, we're gonna strike through background checks from prohibited uses. Leave licenses and insurance costs, cause those are truly administrative costs.
Right.
But move background checks up to a permitted use for the cash grant. So, and that's actually better to do that because it then does clearly identify that, hey, you can use this for a background check and maybe it helps.
They might not do it otherwise.
Now, now I'm understanding what you were, and so we're putting that on the permitted use as. Costs for background checks.
Yes.
And then leave prohibited uses.
Licenses or insurance.
And I'll probably include that in the administrative cost line. There's a couple lines up.
Should be part of what they need to.
Do on their own.
Provide.
Correct.
Right.
And last, the years of service, the scoring system, this on the selection criteria, twenty-five points for ten-plus years. A lot of your organizations that have been around for ten-plus years, they usually have seasoned sponsors that are already contributing to their organization. Um, there have been a lot of organizations that have been in service for five years, four years, and doing an amazing job. And it's to encourage them to continue to invest in the community. And I think this twenty-five, this twenty-five points with ten years of service, I think that bar is set pretty high. And I think it only allows for a few organizations.
Yeah, we could certainly adjust that down.
What would you adjust that to then?
Five, five, five plus years for twenty-five points and then ten points, one, one.
Okay.
One to four.
Okay.
And then also if we can agree on just, I guess, hard deadlines, so that we can let the community know when these funds will be available.
So.
We take it forward at the next council meeting, we'll have to have the, the list of, of our names for the, the committee, then we'll meet.
We'll need a list of the names by the committee, we'll need the list for the committee.
I'll need to add to the. I'll need to add it to the agenda for the July second meeting, so it'll be next week, about midweek.
Yeah. So we will, um, we'll bring it forward at the, uh, July second meeting.
And, and we can work mayor, we can work on finalizing the, uh.
Yeah.
The grant agreement. Contract and.
July thirty it'll go live. How's that, you know, for, for opening up the, the portal? Does that, does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Anybody, any other questions for Bradley?
So we'll make all those adjustments that were mentioned, then we'll be, that's being approved tonight?
I can, I, I mean, I can bring this final document back at the second as well.
Like a final.
With, with the select committee, that's, yeah, if you'd like to do that.
And then we'll just entable this until the next, the next council meeting with those, those changes.
Oh, in addition to that, if we're, you know, I'll, I'll talk to you offline about it, don't.
Okay.
Uh, just one more clarifying point, I just want to make sure I got the notes right. Uh, for the grant awards, I heard a couple things. Are we keeping it at five thousand as the max and five hundred as minimum?
Okay. Well, and, cause that would, in, to confirm, that's not a five thousand dollar project, it's at least a ten thousand dollar project.
Correct.
We're just contributing five thousand dollars to it.
Because we're asking for a, a, a match.
Correct. Okay, I just want to make, yeah, that's, so it's.
That's why we want to kind of leave it to the applicant to tell us what their program is and what that funding will help do. Because they have to match to it.
Absolutely. No, I think that's, I, I, again, I, I know we think five thousand dollars is going to go quick, but it's not just without a match. And again, it has to be at least a ten thousand dollar provable program at that point, so.
Uh, one last clarifying point, Commissioner Nesta, you brought up about the, um. In-kind cash donations from the city of Apopka related organization staff. I think what you wanted to change that to was that if a commissioner or the mayor. Donates the organization from their discretionary, that funding would not count as part of the match for this grant program.
You can't use city funds to match city funds.
Correct, so I will, I can update the language on that to, to reflect that.
And then the related organization side too, so.
Yeah, so I, I talked, I spoke a little bit, or got a little bit more clarification on that. And I believe what that was kind of surrounding was, we have some pretty close, uh, entities with the fire and police departments. Um, nonprofit arms and things like that.
Okay.
So I think there was some concern of maybe some, we, we want to try it, just like the discretionary fund. We don't want to double dip or triple dip sometimes, but. I think we still need some clarity on what that means, so I would recommend that, uh, we just keep it with what we talked about. Funds donated from the discretionary accounts of the mayor and commissioners cannot be used for the match.
Should not be used in these grants.
Cannot be used to match these grant funds.
No, as a match.
Correct.
And you're gonna take out related organizations?
We're gonna take the rest of that out.
Okay.
So let me ask you, so if an organization comes in and asks for a grant and we give a matching grant. Can that same organization now come to the individual commissioners or?
Yeah, they could, cause at that point, they would already.
They were already shown that they have the matching funds outside of that request to the commissioner. So it wouldn't be part of the match. Now, if they came to the commissioner first, received a, a, a. A donation from the commissioner's discretionary fund, they couldn't then put it on their application as part of that match towards that amount.
But you can still contribute, they just, they can't use that as proof.
They just can't use it as backing to say, we have the extra fi- we have the five thousand dollars to match the five thousand dollars the city's coming. Or committing.
Oh, you know, it was one other thing I'm. So with the, I think was really important, making sure they're providing services to the residents here in Apopka. Cause this allows for someone from. Lake County to apply for our funding. Is it somewhere in here that says the services has to be used for the residents?
Provide public benefit to the residents of Apopka. So, there's nothing in there that says the, the nonprofit has to be Apopka Incorporated?
Can we make it ju- project criteria that it, it must be to the benefit of the Apopka community?
It's in, it's in the.
Well, that's a scoring.
Well, we could put it, if it's not in the criteria.
It's a requirement.
That it, so if you aren't, if you can't prove, not even on scoring, so if you can't prove that it's going to benefit.
Yeah, we could certainly add that in the project criteria.
Because we want to make sure these funds are actually being utilized here.
Yeah, and that was the intent, it was on the scoring matrix, the intent would be that obviously it needs to be an Apopka community benefit.
But we need to put it in there.
I think it should be exclusively.
Not, not exclusively, but. But, I mean, yeah.
I think it should, I think it should be, because we want to make sure these funds are used locally here.
Well, I'm saying is, you know, there's, there's City of Apopka and then there's South of Apopka and there's, you know, Zellwood.
Apopka resident.
Apopka community.
Apopka area.
Okay, Apopka area, I'm good with, okay.
Yeah.
But yeah, just gotta be.
Apopka area.
Okay, Apopka area.
So we'll put that on the eligibility, right?
Yep, yep.
Pro- yeah, project criteria, funds exclusively or exclusively used for the benefit, the Apopka area community.
Yep, okay. All right, you got, got everything there, Bradley?
So does this apply to any of the, um, organizations or events that we actually, uh, support?
Uh, so this would be available to any nonprofit that fits the project, uh, criteria. Um, as we'd mentioned in the agenda prep meeting, staff is working on a similar type model program. For nonprofit community events and cultural events. Uh, again, to try and create a system that's structured, streamlined, and also equitable. For the, for the organizations that are doing great community events, civic events for the Apopka area.
Okay.
That'll come at a late, a later time.
Right, cause I, I did, I have mentioned that, I've been mentioning that we need to have a policy. Um, for all the events that the city does partner with.
Correct.
Okay, all right, anybody from public we should speak on this one?
Up McKinney, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. It occurs to me that, uh, the small amount of money that we're speaking about individually to nonprofits. And the amount of hoops that you're putting in their way is going to make it very difficult. I run a small nonprofit, have been in the city of Apopka for ten years. I don't have the facilities to have people help me do the paperwork and do all sorts of things. And to be honest with you. Commissioner Smith nailed it on the head when he said, there's gonna be. Problems if you only have a small window of opportunity to apply for these grants. It takes us time to, to make plans, it takes us time to do things. In terms of five oh one C threes. If you do not register for, to the IRS for the five oh one C three. They don't necessarily take your five oh one C three away for three years. So somebody could be out of. The, 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 what they're supposed to be to require to do and still have a five oh one C three. In terms of the financial documentation that has to be given. A five oh one C that's, that takes in less than fifty thousand a year, doesn't have to report, it's self-certified. They sign a, a document that says we've received less than fifty thousand a year. So they, they've got no requirement other than stamping, uh, a document and sign it. You know, we really need to look closely at how we can facilitate the nonprofits locally. Other than just with funding. One of the things, and I'm going to be critical of you commissioners, I've been out there for ten years. Has any of you ever visited me in a, in official capacity to see what we do? The answer to that is no, you know, it's not just about money. I have volunteers out there, I have women who come and, and work with the horses, who work with children. Who work with autistic children, we've worked with traffic children. It would have been nice if the city of Apopka had recognized one volunteer and give them a bunch of roses and said, hey. What a great job you've done for the city of Apopka. I'm not the only small nonprofit feels like this. We've had discussions roundabout, but we feel the city does not recognize what the citizens do for the Apo-. For, for Apopka. So when you're considering funding, consider how you can also. Recommend those small nonprofits in Apopka.
And I just want to just comment on that is, I, I think this is a start, this is the first time we implemented something like this. So there are going to be some growing pains, but I think this is just a great start, so.
I appreciate this presentation and, um. I didn't know that it was going to be a match. Right, did, did I miss something? I didn't. It is a match. I didn't know the wheels had changed for that. I just thought it was just a full grant, but not a grant match program. So when did that change? I mean, was that what we initially said?
I, I don't think that we actually had, I think we just put it in the budget. I don't think we actually had a framework or any type of guideline. They want to look at other municipalities and kind of see kind of what, what's worked. I think the idea behind the match, because I did bring up in my general review, because I had an issue with the match as well. But the idea behind the match is, we really want organizations that have some skin in the game and that, you know, that are.
Successful.
Successful. Um, we want to make sure that we are actually being spending responsible in awarding these, um, contracts responsible. So I think that is the idea behind it, because I too, um, personally had an issue with the match. But once we kind of did a deep dive into it, it did make sense and want to make sure that they are able to sustain what we're giving them. And that we're not helping them start their, start their organization up.
So for, for, um, startup, people that are just starting up a five oh one C three and they want to get in the program. I see a lot of things that would stop me from getting it. When it says in-kind goods or services, because I don't expect to, I, I don't get a lot of. I mean, I, my organization would not be receiving a lot of cash. But we will receive a lot of in-kind goods. So how would you match that? How would you support that?
It's, it says.
I think it said fifty percent.
Combination of cash and or in-kind goods or services can be used as a match.
So if someone to get, were to give me an in-kind service of, let's say a thousand dollars of goods.
Dollars of, of that as.
So I can apply for fifty, five hundred dollars of it, okay. So that would have to be for the whole year, for the upcoming year or?
So this is, that's what we're kind of, so the idea, and to answer your question, that is a good for startup services, startup organizations like your, yours. This is actually great because you are able to utilize in-kind services to kind of build your, build your organization.
Okay, so that would be a way of me, so I would receive cash for that or I would receive more in-kind goods?
Cash.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we know.
The grant programs for cash.
Okay, okay, I understand, I understand.
Anybody else? All right.
Not.
Uh, giving standards is very important. Um, when it comes to like the audit and all, that's going to be. Exorbitant for small charities. Um, big charities can afford it, um, so, but with. Um, looking at being accountable for their money. If they're actually filling out and, and filing with F DAX like they're supposed to. Um, then taking their IRS statement. And filling out the F DAX online is going to be providing that accountability. The nine ninety, um, E, the EZ or the nine ninety N is going to be. Irrelevant, just signing the piece of paper, because they take their IRS tax statement. And take those numbers and put it online with F DAX. And then it reflects on Checka Charity. But if you don't fill that out online, then the numbers don't get reflected in Checka Charity. And then your cu- uh, consumers, your donors are going to see your numbers on Checka Charity. And see what percentage goes towards, uh, your services. And that's the point of Checka Charity on F DAX is that. It's an evaluation tool for, for Florida, um, charities. And it's horrible when we look on there and a charity is thirty-five percent towards. Services or seventy percent. And they should be, we've got some charities here in town that are a hundred percent. And it should be that way, especially if it's a volunteer organization. Um, and not seven percent as we're seeing in some of these cases, or zero they've posted. Where everything went to administration and not a penny went to services. And so it can be a easy to do, very easy to do. Just take your tax report, go to F DAX, go online and put the numbers in there and it will reflect. And it's an easy do, but, um, the matching will help them. And keep people honest too.
Anybody else?
Oh, one more thing, Bradley, and I did, I received, um. I had a, no, no, I'm Bradley, thank you. I did receive a, uh, in conversation with one of the residents, they were concerned. About the match that we want for this small amount of money. And we awarded an organization fifty thousand dollars and we didn't require a match. So their question was, is there a reason that the standard for this organization, we didn't require a match? And then we had, and we gave them half of what we're requiring a ma- you know, a hundred thousand dollar budget for twenty organizations. But one organization in particular, we gave fifty thousand dollars to, we required absolutely no match.
Correct, so I can't speak too much to that, that was before my time in the interim seat. But I do know that, uh, the main, uh, speaking of the Main Street Apopka Program. I do know they came multiple times in front of the council with some presentations, some information. And it kind of went from there, so I think it's good that we're now looking at a structured program.
I think that's important.
To utilize this and, and provide an equitable opportunity for our nonprofits that are doing good in the community. And a function for them to, to operate.
Okay, I just wanted to put, they asked me that, I just kind of want to put it out there.
And I did, Mayor Friday May, I had one more clar- clarification on the notes that I was looking at. Uh, and I believe it was from Commissioner Velasquez, and this is a, a point that probably should be taken. Uh, we did specify specifically five oh one C three organizations. There are, uh, obviously C four and C six organizations, your sport. Club, you know, sport kind of clubs and then your social wa- welfare groups. So is that, just putting it out there, I know that's what we had spoke about in your agenda prep meeting. Some of the, some of the groups that provide so- social welfare opportunities.
So, so what Pop Warner is a?
I believe Pop Warner is a.
Cindy or Chris?
I think they would fall under recreational club possibly. We'd have to do some, I'd have to do some research. I can bring it back at next meeting if you like. And some of the others were like the Pop Woman's Club, the Rotary Club, some of those social welfare, welfare groups, so I'll identify those. And bring them back at the next meeting and.
Okay, whether we want to add those two types of, okay.
Correct.
All right.
Okay, yeah, correct. We'll, we'll look into the Pop Warner little leagues, those type of clubs.
Okay, all right.
But just, I wanted to make sure we didn't pass over that.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you, Bradley. So, uh, looking for a motion to continue the nonprofit grant program to the July second meeting. With each commissioner bringing forward a name in the next week, um, to be your member on this, uh, selection committee. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Smith, all is in favor. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, ordinance number thirty-one oh two.
Ordinance number thirty-one oh two. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from county A one citrus rural. To K P I M U Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use Assignment of Neighborhood District Overlay. For certain real property generally located west of Golden Gem Road, south of Nightshade Grove Lane and Sadler Road. Comprising nineteen point seven six acres more or less, owned by Timothy Birchfield, Robert and Stacy Moss. Pro- providing for severability conflicts and ineffective date.
Any changes, Jean? Okay, anybody from public we should speak on this one? If not, we close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve or adopt ordinance number three thousand one hundred and two. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second, second by Commissioner Nesta, all is in favor. All right, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one oh nine.
Ordinance number thirty-one oh nine. In ordinance of the city of Apopka.
In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by MG eight eight Central Florida Cold Storage, the second LLC, located south of West Orange Blossom Trail between Albrecht Avenue and Stewart Avenue, comprising point forty acres more or less, providing directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes, Jean? Okay, anybody from the public which should speak on this one? Not, we close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand one oh nine. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? All right, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand ninety-eight.
Ordinance number three thousand ninety-eight. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Complienza Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city residential, very low suburban, for property located at twenty-five oh one Rock Springs Road, owned by B S C Rock Springs East LLC, comprising of nine point six three acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Mayor, per the applicant's request, um, we are asking for continuance of this item and the preceding one to the July sixteenth, um, city council meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? If not, we close the public hearing, look for motion to continue uh, ordinance number three thousand ninety-eight to the July sixteenth meeting. Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Do I, um, declare the ex parte with them, because I did meet with them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, ordinance number three thousand ninety-nine?
Ordinance number three thousand ninety-nine. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional to R S F one B Residential Single Family District Large Lot for certain real property generally located at twenty-five oh one Rock Springs Road, owned by B S C Rock Springs East LLC, comprising of nine point six three acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes, Jean?
Sir, we're asking for the same continuance.
Okay. Anybody from the public which should speak on this one? Not, we close the public hearing, look for motion to continue ordinance number three thousand ninety, three thousand ninety-nine to the July sixteenth meeting. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand one oh seven?
Ordinance number thirty-one oh seven. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four, the here and after described lands situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by six P M S one R E O LLC, H M F LLC, Charles P Stallings, Kim L Stallings, Yule E Stallings Junior and Crystal Denise Stallings, located on the northwest corner of Anditch Road and State Road four fifty-three, State Road four twenty-nine, comprising of a hundred and ninety-six point eight three acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts and an effective date.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department, this is a request to accept the first reading of ordinance number three one zero seven and hold it over for second reading and approval, um, at the next available meeting, which is July second, twenty twenty-five. The subject properties are located on northwest corner of Anditch Road and State Road four twenty-nine. It is approximately a hundred and ninety-six acres in size. Based on legal council's determination, these are eligible for annexation pursuant to Florida statutes one seventy-one. The assignment of a city future land use and zoning designation will occur at a later date and through actions by the city council. D R C recommends approval, the recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three one zero seven and hold it over for second reading and adoption. Stop, staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean Sanchez? Not like bring up the applicant real quick. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Luke Classen, eighteen twenty-eight Engineering.
You want to just kind of run through the, what, what your, the vision is, just so we got a
Sure.
I know it's an annexation, but
Just for ex parte, I did have a meeting with, uh, the developer and, um, and the group that did come in to see me and, um, they did present me with a not a site plan, but something that they're going to do that was done with, uh, with, uh, our planner Jean Sanchez and our, and Bobby Howard.
Correct.
And I also
And so
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate all your time before that, but I also want to applaud you on your time tonight, I know it's late night, so try and keep this a little bit brief, but also want to be able to handle any questions or addressing concerns you might have. So with this annexation, we are proposing the annexation because of the location of the property is just north of the K P I. Um, Anditch Road is really the limit, the northern limit of the K P I, where you're seeing a lot of the growth in the city. And so with utilities, this is the utility service area for the city of Apopka, we really wanted to emphasize that this property is being, um, served, whether it's developed in Orange County or city of Apopka by the city of Apopka Utilities. So we wanted to annex into the city just to be able to have it be uniform, be served by the utilities and city has the benefit of collecting all the tax dollars and having control of the development or having, um, some say in the development. One of the things, one of the ways that the cities controlled that or, or, um, helped that is when we originally submitted the site plan, your, your staff did a wonderful job of coordinating with us and while we liked our previous plan, they gave us some ideas and gave us some suggestions to help us cluster and be able to, uh, kind of do some more tree saves instead of open space savings and kind of provide a, a plan that both they and we feel, I don't want to speak for them, but we feel is a much better plan, gives the city of Apopka something that uh, the residents will like and give the buyer something they like by providing what will be, and again, we're just here for the annexation, but what we're proposing is a gated subdivision with larger lots with a greater than fifty percent open space. And so we want to provide that. That's something that the K P I, um, doesn't allow with the code, you can't do gated subdivisions, so this would be kind of that, that different buyer that's looking for more of a higher end, larger lots, a lot of open space that's kind of shared common area with trails behind it, so that's what we're going for with this neighborhood. This is the first step in that, is that first reading of the annexation.
Any questions for Luke?
No, I appreciate that you took some suggestions. Um, I was happy with the second addition that you brought. Um, and I did give you some suggestions.
Yeah, and we took this into account and really the, the credit belongs to your staff, they did a great job of helping us guide us along. Sometimes we need to be handled a little bit.
I know, where's Jean? She was
Jean and Bobby were both very instrumental.
Where is she?
She's standing up, she's just very short. Uh, here, I'll lower this for you.
Didn't I?
You might be able to see her.
Compliment you on working on this?
I don't know that I qual- Legally, I don't think I qualified into the H R department, that's, the city attorney has to get into that.
No, I did, I did. Remember, I, I was really surprised that it was Jean and Bobby that did this look. And, and at the agenda review, she said the same thing to me, she goes, what? But I did, I complimented and it was a compliment. I really appreciated the work that you and Bobby put into this. Um, it, it, it's a much better product than what was presented.
Thank you.
So, i- if I may, walk, walk me through, and I appreciate the, the increased fifty percent plus of green space, obviously that's what we want to see.
It's a minimum, but yeah.
Yeah, at least, and, and I appreciate that, um, that we're already servicing utility wise, uh, these parcels. Walk me through how this is not creating enclaves.
Okay. You're not currently servicing it, it's within the utility service area. And so whether we developed it in Orange County or city of Apopka, the city of Apopka would provide utilities, so that's, that's all we're saying about that. We would be extending, and we have, again, this is annexation, so I don't want to get too far ahead or into the weeds, but we would be extending the utilities, we worked with your staff for, um, extending utilities down Effie and down Anditch. With regard to the on, the enclave, we've reached out to Orange County, this is actually within the J P A area, so the J P A that you heard earlier tonight, that you're looking to, at the next meeting vote on whether you're going to extend it or not. This is within the area that is defined as coordinated with Orange County. There's certain criteria, it's the north, I think it's defined as the northwest, uh, area, I think is the, what the name of the map in that J P A. And this is the area directly north of the K P I that's looked at as potentially being annexed in the city. So we're not creating enclaves. This county's already looked at it, they've verified it meets state statutes. There's no concerns that, but we have our attorney here, if you want to ask any other things, or I know Cliff has been in contact with Orange County and with the, uh, developer's attorney as well.
I, I guess if we just look at the picture, I don't see how it doesn't create an enclave.
Oh, sure.
Like, so, and I, and I understand, and I read the legal opinion on both sides, and then our attorney obviously agreeing with it as well. I, just looking at the picture, it looks like it creates an enclave.
So, yes, uh, Elisa Sowell was at Zimbo in three hundred South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida, three two eight oh one. Can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay. Uh, do you get my name? Elisa Sowell? Okay, so this picture is actually incorrect. So the long parcel, I don't have a clicker. The long parcel to the west, that seems like it is Kenny Kitty Corner to the let's see, I don't know how to use this, that's Kitty Corner to the no, check it. Nope. We'll just go with this. So it, it's the parcel that's Kitty Corner to the green parcel, that is actually going to go halfway across. That, it does not touch the parcel that we're proposing that's within. Because of your G I S system, it's pulling in the entirety of that parcel and it's actually going to be continuing, can you figure it out? So it's actually, there we go, continuing across.
Right there.
That does not touch.
That's
Correct. That's not within the project. So you're not creating an enclave because the parcels to your west are connecting to the parcels directly south of the project and south of Anditch, and then you have the parcel if you want to okay. Okay, so these parcels right here connect to this parcel down here, which then flows into Orange County. So legally, there is no enclave. I have, um, confirmation from Misty Mills, who was here earlier this evening, who has confirmed that they have no issue with the annexation, that the annexation complies with the three statutory requirements under chapter one seventy-one.
So are you, so, and, and so the correct map, if this hopefully helps, it's in your, uh,
Our application.
Correct. So the correct map is in that that I'm looking at, so I can, I can see that visually very well. So you're splitting that lot in half effectively?
Yes, we are not purchasing that lot.
Okay.
In our understanding, we noticed this, it, when this first came out with the agenda, our understanding and talking to staff is that the G I S system has to select the whole parcel.
Sure.
And so we wanted to correct it, but I think the way the city's system works.
Yep.
And, and it wasn't a mistake, it's, it's the way the system defines it.
I understand. Yeah, because it's currently a whole parcel.
Correct.
So is it, the are we splitting that parcel in half just to meet the requirements of it?
No, we don't have that under contract.
Okay.
This, this was part of the, the deal with the owners. They're going to retain that.
They retain that?
Yes.
And they, they're, they're, the northern half they're not using, so they can sell it all.
Okay. Is it already split or is that something you guys have to go through?
That will be something that we proceed with.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? The applicant? Okay. Anybody from the public which should speak on this one?
So, just for clarification, the, the description, sketch description, everything else, the survey's been provided, is accurate. It's just these two maps because of the system that show that incorrect parcel.
Albert McKemme, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. I've got no real opinion, one way or the other, as to whether we annex this in or not. Uh, my only question is consistency. If we do annex this in, do we have the critical infrastructure to supply the sewage and the water and anything else we might need? Bear in mind that we do have some problems with the infrastructure just now. Uh, and this is what, a hundred and ninety acres? Uh, it's low density, so it certainly fulfills what I would like to see for that area. From that aspect, you know, I support everything that's low density, because alternatively, something changes and it becomes higher density later on. I would just like to think that, that, you know, if we're going to develop roundabout here, we, we remain consistent with what we do and that we do try and keep a lower density in that area and that uh, I would much rather have development there than not have it with an arid sprawl heading down towards the springs.
Anybody else from the public which should speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve annexation ordinance number three thousand one oh seven at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
I just want to make one final comment and appreciate working with you guys. I just can't get behind this one, although legally, it's not creating an enclave. Pragmatically, I think it does, and again, that, it's not against you guys, I just, I don't think this is going to help our city with the infrastructure issues we have in not creating an enclave. Thank you.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? All right, all opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Nesta voting in opposition. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one one twelve. Thirty, thirty.
Ordinance number thirty-one twelve, in ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Reed Marvin Wayne and Reed Susan Thomas, located at nineteen twenty Wheeler Avenue, comprising of four, forty point sixteen acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts and an effective date.
Mayor, we're requesting that this item is continued to the date certain of July second, twenty twenty-five. Um, we had a little bit of a advertisement discrepancy with this one, and we just want to make sure everything is compliant.
Hey, anybody from the public which should speak on this one? Not, we close the public hearing, look for motion to continue ordinance number three thousand one hundred and twelve to the July second city council meeting. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? All right, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-four and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, providing for a budget amendment.
Um, good afternoon, mayor commissioners, plan chairman, finance director. Um, two items before you, uh, within this budget amendment. Um, moving funds from the general fund operating reserves to support some pond overhaul for one of our M S B U's at Martin Place one, located at five nine, five nine seven Martin Place off of Vic Road. Um, the pond has overgrown with vegetation, so it needs regrading and the pond banks and bottoms need to be regraded. And that is in the amount of sixty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. The double amount there is because there is deed a, a transfer from the general fund, because this special assessment fund does not have the funds at this time.
And they, are, will we be adjusting the M S B U for this one?
We should be, should be adjusting the M S B U. It's a loan, it'll have to be paid back over a period of time.
Sure. Okay. When, when would we make those adjustments? When, when do you think we'll make that adjustment to update the M S B U char, what we charge?
I'm hoping that it comes this, this fiscal
It'll be, it'll be probably in September with the final budget information.
Understood. And then, last question, I'm, I'm sorry to not ask this, um, yesterday in our meeting. Well, because of, we're taking this kind of pond over and it's maintenance, will we put this into um, kind of a, a normal maintenance schedule then, so it's not a surprise that we're building up reserves in this account basically for them?
I think it's been in, this M S B U has been in effect probably a couple of years.
Yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, it does cover ongoing maintenance, we'll have to include that as well.
Okay, understood, thank you.
All right. The other item is the hundred and fifty thousand that, um, I came to council and requested to support the uh, special assessment for Emerson Park, where it was, um, covering the legal fees, the bond council fees and all of those fees. And I had asked for an additional, um, seventy-five K at that time. Um, since we have the, um, special assessment set up and we have received the loan proceeds and the proceeds from Emerson Park subdivision, I am now reversing that transaction. I'm returning the funds to, um, the reserves. So this is actually, and I don't know how it didn't, is a negative twenty-seven one fifty. So somebody took my parentheses off, but it's a negative twenty-seven one fifty intentionally. Somebody took my parentheses off, but it's a negative twenty-seven one fifty intentionality.
It's proper in the staff report.
Yes, it is proper in the staff report.
Any questions for Blanche? Anybody from the public which should speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blaskas. All those in favor? All those. Motion carries.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Sorry, I don't want to hold y'all long. I know y'all been up all day and stuff. Um, I just wanted to say, um, you know, we came, I'm part, I'm I'm Valerie Sparkman. I'm the owner of Just Like Mama's um Soul Food, but I, again, I'm not here for that. I am here because I'm a part of Apopka Juneteenth. Tomorrow is the official um holiday of Juneteenth, so whoo-hoo. Um, I just wanted to say, we came, um, I came as a representative of the um the organization of Transform Outreach um to ask for funding or to place the funding and stuff, but I want to also come back um as a follow-up and say thank you um to you guys. Um, first Nadia for um making sure that the funds were allocated for us and Mr. Nesta um um for for um taking care, um when I text him, he was like, yeah, I'm gonna find out um what's going on. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you. I also want to thank the mayor because um I don't know what happened, but I just wanted on record, somebody put a dumpster in the entrance way of the um the park that doesn't make sense. But anyway, the mayor came down and took care of it, so I am thankful for that. Um, also, um, it was a success. Like I saw police officers everywhere. I wasn't there but thirty minutes because, of course, I have my own business and I couldn't be there this year, but um I came and I saw um officers um interacting with the children um with their allocated funds. We were able to get um rock climbing walls. Can y'all imagine that for South Apopka? You know, um demographic graphics that having a a wall climbing, you know, in the middle of on Sixth Street. You know, bungee jumping, like I, that was amazing, you know? And I just want to say thank you, guys. That kid's corner was like delight, and so that's gonna bring more. And that's all because of the twelve K, because there, we had a bounce house last year with a water slide. And that doesn't cost anything, you know, much. So I just want to say again, thank you. And um thank you for the partnership, Radley. I know you, I get on your nerves and Miss Carolyn, I don't know where she is. Um, so but I just want to say, I do, the only reason I talk is because, or I complain is because I wanted to get done and get done properly, and you guys made it happen. So thank you. All right.
All right, Commissioner Anderson, you want to get us started?
Oh, actually, I I have nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Blaskas.
Uh, no, it's late.
Okay, Commissioner Smith.
Uh, I I just want to say that uh I had an opportunity to attend an event with uh Deputy Chief on uh yesterday, outstanding event, and I really appreciated being there uh as they separate, celebrated Juneteenth uh the Nobles. And uh and then I want to say thanks to the uh Papa Police Department. I think it was two weeks ago, my car caught a fire at the intersection of I uh four forty-one and Park Avenue, and they came in direct traffic and made sure I was I was safe. So I appreciate that.
Mr. Nesta?
Yes, first and foremost, prayers and appreciation to the fire department for um the the four house fires they took care of this weekend. It was my understanding that two of the firefighters uh got hurt. Um, so just prayers for them and and swift recovery for them and their families. It's my understanding they're they're possibly back to work now, but again, it's it's just that job is is um scary at times. So I just appreciate what they've done, prayers for them, and just so much appreciation for what they're doing and and what they've done. Um, I have uh just constant reminder, office hours, I've paused them for tomorrow and obviously in recognition of Juneteenth, so um in in honor of Juneteenth, so uh please everyone do the same. And I'll be resuming them the twenty-sixth, uh which is the following Thursday, from eleven AM to one PM. Um, again, uh it's in thirty-minute increments, so anybody that would like to uh schedule them, please do. They're not required to make a appointment, though, and if anybody would like to meet uh outside of City Hall, obviously, I completely understand if you're feeling any kind of discomfort coming to City Hall, so please reach out in any capacity and I'll make sure to accommodate you. And then um I want to discuss the the invocation and and the order of that. It's improper where it is. It are, what I would like to see, can we implement rules of procedure? Does anybody have an appetite to actually have rules of procedure that are a policy that we follow?
Is this in addition to um he reads the uh.
Well, it's just this quorum statement. It's what rules do we follow to that structure our meeting properly that could uh make sure that it's efficient and consistent? So what most municipalities do is Robert's Rules of Order, right? It's not something we have to create. We just implement that as a policy that that's how we're running our meetings. It includes decorum. It includes a lot to where people understand how to.
I mean, so is is, I mean, just ask the chair, is that an issue? I mean, can we just do the pledge and the invocation at the beginning and then do public comment? I mean.
I just, the reason I put it there is so that if people want to leave after public comment, that the people are coming in for their their issues that they're here. If people leave, I mean, it goes both ways. We lost people right after public comment, and we've got people who are coming in, so I I.
But the pledge and then invocation is less than five minutes, so I don't I don't see it a problem being before public comment, and then after public comment, um they can still leave. I mean, we're not changing. We're just saying the invocation and the pledge.
Yeah, can we?
It's only five minutes.
Well, it's less than that. It's two minutes. And again, it's proper and it's in order, so.
It says may, just just so you're, you know, you read it down, it said may, didn't say shall, so just.
It says should.
Okay.
Always be placed first, so should and always.
Didn't say shall.
So, yeah, correct. You you don't like to be proper, and that's okay, and uh provide prayer and blessings and peace to everybody that is speaking of public comment.
Um, yeah, I don't see a problem with it. It's only five minutes. As soon as we start the meeting to do the um invocation and the pledge, it's not a big issue.
Commissioner Smith, what is your thoughts on this?
Is that the pledge of the chair?
What about a policy for how we run our meetings? Because we don't have anything like that.
We have Robert rules, but we don't.
We don't. We don't, it's not a policy we use. We don't have anything in place, so.
That's part of the city charter that we we still have not brought back.
And that could be absolutely put on that, or we could just create a policy now. Uh, Mr. Williams, we can, can we come up with a rough draft policy or Attorney Shepherd?
I I do, I I serve in pleasure and will do whatever I'm asked to do. I don't get to go freelance.
Okay, let's move on to city administrators' report.
Well, I'm not done yet, so.
Okay.
We also want to speak about the minutes. As long as we can have a policy moving forward, again, something just specific that I can point to.
We we've we've gone over this ad in the infinite item about.
Do we have a policy in place that I can point residents to that says this is how we're doing minutes?
What exactly? Why don't you write one up and bring it back to us, and then we'll take a look at that. We'll we'll go.
Absolutely. I'll be on the next agenda then.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll coordinate that with Mr. Williams.
Radley?
All right, I'll try and be brief here. I do have uh two items. Uh, we're in the process of our strategic planning, um and we do have some community forums coming up uh in August. Uh, Wednesday, August thirteenth, from six to seven thirty here in the council chambers. Uh, Thursday, August fourteenth, ten AM to eleven thirty here in the council chambers. And Thursday, August fourteenth, late in the day from one to two thirty. Those will also be livestreamed on our YouTube channel. I've got flyers for you, Commissioner, so don't worry.
I know, but isn't that the Florida league of cities?
Yes. We got, we can make Wednesday, you can make, but Thursday and Friday.
And it will be livestream on the YouTube channel.
So you're gonna hold the?
The the consultant Barry Dunn will be here running and and leading these uh community forums.
This will be open to the public?
Correct.
Also, they can come.
They can come, give feedback.
Fourteen and fifteen.
And we've created three different times of the day to accommodate different schedules for uh the residents and community.
All right, so you you'll be holding?
Yeah, I've got a flyer. I'll give it to all of you, and and more information on the strategic plan can be found at our website at apopka.gov slash plan. Okay. Um, and then I did send emails earlier in the week to each of you individually about the uh Brownfield uh advisory committee. Uh, we do have the opportunity to appoint up to five members as a coalition city. I sent some additional information about what the Brownfield Advisory Committee does, so I won't uh get into too much detail there. Uh, just looking for the pledge of the board direction on whether you'd like to appoint uh new members to this committee, um how you want to appoint that, if you want to each do a appointee and bring it back to a council meeting. Just looking for further direction on that.
We already have, what, we already have some that do we?
There was, we had four in the past that that served and.
But that was a while.
It was a while ago.
I would, you know, we all have new, we have new commissioners on the on the board, and I believe that that committee was appointed years ago.
Yeah, before my time.
Yeah, so um, sure, bring a new um each of us, select a.
So if you'd like to, while you're uh out looking for an appointee for the nonprofit grant program, if you'd like to look for one of those, we can.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. Should they have any type of experience or background, or is it just uh somebody that's an active community member?
I'll connect you with uh with uh Dr. Dr. Jackson, Harris Jackson.
Okay.
And uh she can also connect you with the Florida or with the Brownfield Committee as well.
Okay.
So if there's any other questions.
Thank you.
That it, Bradley?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. Cliff, anything? All right, okay. Uh, Mayor's report, just real quickly. Um, boy, it was interesting. We had in the budget, the House side, we had a million fifty-seven five hundred in the House side for more replacement of asbestos uh cement drinking water pipes. Uh, it was zero uh dollars in the Senate budget, and so went over to Representative Bankston's office. We um, we uh made a call to uh Keith Truenow, who is the senator uh that represents uh just outside of Apopka, but uh anyway, got him to get it in the budget. So uh we got an approval for a million fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for continue to 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 uh to uh replace the asbestos pipes we have here in the city.
That was a million one?
Million, million fifty-seven five hundred. I'm not sure how they got to that number, but we'll take it.
Yeah.
And with that.